Actually, it's six o'clock. We can call the meeting to order. And we're gonna go ahead and start off with the pledge. I think Mr. Boardman has some pledges here.
Thank you. Come on up. So, I'm just gonna say a couple of words and then I will turn it over. But, so last year, you might recall, we started a new program to help support students at recess through Playworks. And through some of the success of that, and then really Ms. McQueen, formerly Ms. Brown, and I, over the summer, kinda came up with a new idea to continue to increase the student leadership opportunities for our 4th grade students, but also just to kinda fill a need we felt like we had, where we might be able to have students supporting students. And while we're not really ready to take off with a full sort of student government program, we started our 4th grade student ambassadors. And so, I have two ambassadors who are here tonight to introduce themselves and kinda tell you a little bit about what they do as ambassadors. So we'll go ahead and do that, and then do the pledge after that, if that's all right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Hi, my name is Jacob Ellis from Mrs. Matthews' class.
My name is Maya from Mrs. Matthews' class.
The reason I like to be an ambassador is to go around the school and collect tokens and help kids be kind to each other.
What are the tokens?
The tokens are when you do good behaviors with the hallway, lunchroom, recess, and bathroom basics. And how I help community meetings go, I help kids be kind to each other and tell them what to do if they're not doing the right thing.
The reason why I wanted to be ambassador is because I have, like, two brothers and one sister, and I love just working with kids and that stuff. Like, at the end of the days, we get to collect coins, and there's like bathroom, hallway, recess, and...
Lunch?
Lunch, yeah. So we collect those at the end of the day. So, like, there's like jars, and we get the tokens from it. So, yeah.
And we ask you guys questions, all right? Come up here. All right, so let's talk about that token. So, there are tokens in a jar. How do the tokens get in the jar?
By people doing good deeds, like doing a good job in the bathroom, doing a good job at recess and lunch, and hallway.
And do kids actually put the tokens in the jar?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
And how do they know to put a token in the jar?
If they got a sticker.
And what are the types of things that you need to do in order to, like, if you earn a sticker, you can then go put a token? So you kinda mentioned it, but we're focusing on...
Hallway basics.
What would that be?
Um... Walking in the hall, not yelling, stay to the right.
Not yelling is good. And Maya, what about, like, in the lunchroom? What kinds of things would you do to earn a sticker?
Um, like, not yelling, eating my lunch, not fighting, not getting up from my seat, not running around.
Perfect. So then the other thing you talked about was the community meetings. So you guys help run the community meetings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's two different ways you do that. So one way is, you kinda talked about it, is that sometimes you go sit with the younger kids, right?
Yeah.
And so can you just talk a little bit about that again?
We, um, after we do, like, the pledge, the National, the, um, National Day and shout-outs, we go sit with, like, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd graders to tell them to behave and show five.
And Maya, the last question I have for you is, did you have to do anything in order to become an ambassador, or were you just like, "Poof, you're an ambassador"?
Um, I had to do, like, a paragraph, and I got, I had to get chosen from Ms. Brown, or Ms. Brown.
This is something you guys, like, applied for and showed that you wanted to do, right? So, I am just, again, sort of floored and amazed at, you know, these guys are here today as wonderful examples of just kind of the student leaders that we wanna have, who have ambition and have drive, and are, like, willing to, like, write a paragraph and, you know, do different things to kinda show that they care and to show their leadership. So, super proud of what they have accomplished, and I, obviously because you lead the pledge for morning meeting, I think that you are very skilled at being able to do this. Would you say, agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, yeah, I gotta answer questions.
After all of that, so here first, I'll give you your American flag. Just a thank you for coming here and doing this, something to remember this experience from. And then I'll look, I'll open it up to the board and see if the board has any questions before I ask mine, if anyone wanted to ask anything.
Where do you think you guys have made the best, like, progress? Like, is it in the hallways? Is it lunch? Is it...
Hallways.
Hallways? It was just chaos before? And you're just loving it? How many ambassadors are there?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? So you guys are just two of thirteen. That's amazing. Thank you so much. That's, I mean, that's the, just spreading kindness is just awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
What's your favorite part of doing this job? It sounds like you have a lot of responsibilities as these leaders, so what's your favorite part?
My favorite part is probably, like, talking and doing, like, the BES clap and doing the pledge and all that stuff.
The BES clap is infamous. It will remain etched in my memory forever.
My favorite part is going at the end of the day and clap, counting tokens with my friends.
Oh, that's awesome. Well, thank you for being such great representatives of our whole entire community, but especially of your school, and for doing that work. And I can't wait to see what both of you guys do in our district, because I don't think this will be the last time we hear about the amazing things that you do here. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're also very welcome to stay, but don't feel obligated. We say that to everyone. No obligation, no pressure. It's just, you know, you feel pressure, 'cause it becomes very quiet. But I hope you have a lovely night. All right, so we'll move on to the approval of agenda. There are no amendments or changes, so I just need to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. And then we'll move on to the approval of minutes from October 1, public and non-public. Actually, nope, we can't. I was forgetting. Okay.
One second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, and then...
I'm gonna abstain.
And then we welcome back our high school rep, Lucy Medina here from Co-Brown. Welcome back!
Thank you.
New year!
Yes, see you.
All right, so, yeah, see you in your year. All right, dazzle us with all the things.
All right, so, we actually are finishing our first quarter already. So this Friday is gonna be the end of it. So, starting at the summer, I personally got back from ASP, so I did my law and governance thing, so I did five more weeks of school.
Just for funsies, right?
Yeah, it was actually fun, so it was fun.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, clubs have started, sports are going. Our seniors have already run into our first deadlines. A while ago, we had a personal statement due and our senior project proposal due.
Ooh, you don't waste any time, huh?
Nope.
Okay.
Our, like, resumes due tomorrow, too. Some senior projects have already been done. One of my best friends, Lily Cook, she had a seed bomb workshop. So at the Northwood Library, she had, like, a bucket of mud, and you gotta make little seed bombs. And she showed you, like, the path she made behind the library that the library gets to use now. So, people are moving quick. Other news, our homecoming was September 14th, so a while ago, but, like, homecoming weekend was like a whole thing. There was a lot of games. We had different clubs doing different things. Like, boys volleyball had a soak station fundraiser, so some of our teachers volunteered. And for some money, they either got a chance to get soaked or guaranteed to get soaked. There's videos of all of them.
That's great.
It was, sounded wonderful. Our theater did face painting, FFA sold mums, No One Tells had a breakfast. It was very fun. The day before that, September 13th, was our senior sunrise. So all of us seniors were up there at 6:00 AM on the track court, and then I personally went to Northwood Diner after that, because it was very early. And then obviously for Deerfield Fair weekend, we had that day, that Friday off, so a lot of us went to that anyway. More currently, our CBNA, like, music department's selling pies right now. So my little brother, he's in jazz band. He's been selling right now, too. And then my club, Spanish Orange Society, is selling bouquets, which is basically like a car that you can buy for somebody else that has, like, candy, and you can, like, put a message in it. It's just really cute. And it's just themed for Halloween. And then more upcoming, our craft fair is November 2nd. So from, like, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, a bunch of vendors were either chosen or asked to be, to have, like, a table, and they get to sell, like, their crafts. So, like, Spanish Orange Society is there, and they're gonna have, like, food for everybody, or the vendors at least. And then later that night, the freshman class is hosting, like, a movie night and that kinda stuff. And for other news, I found out that our two science teachers of ours, Ms. Gelsner and Ms. Thompson, partnered with New England farmers through the New England Dairy, and they adopted a cow for agricultural stem. So, like, their class gets to, like, get updates on this calf and, like, get, have meetings with the farmers, and, like, collect data, and, like, ask questions. And so, yeah, we've been, yeah.
Did you get to name it?
I'm not a part of that class, unfortunately. And so I haven't heard any updates on that. But I think they do get to meet the cow soon, so I'm probably gonna learn more about it.
I was ready for a cow pun name.
Cow Brown.
Cow Brown, yes! Oh my gosh! Get that up the flagpole. Okay, yes.
Yes, and, I mean, yeah, that's kind of all it is. I mean, this week's just a bunch of, like, tests and quizzes, 'cause every, everybody's signing things for this week.
No wonder. What was your start date? You guys start...
We started...
Before. It was bef, it's before.
Oh, it was like August 16th or something, yeah.
I'm seeing something.
While ago, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it feels like a long, long time ago.
We're in it, we're very far in it.
All right, well, thank you. Just, I'll entertain any questions from the, from the board on how things are going over at Co-Brown?
What for you? Are you planning, looking at colleges for next year?
Yeah.
When's your first deadline?
My first, I haven't, like, looked specifically which colleges or which deadline, but, like, generally January. 'Cause anything that's, like, binding's very scary. 'Cause I'm actually planning to take a gap year, so it's just, like, binding, I need, like, that extra year. So it's, yeah, it's, it's a little scary, but very exciting.
Well, thank you for joining us. I appreciate it. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, moving on, is our first opportunity for public comment. Just as a reminder, this is only the first opportunity. There is another opportunity later, at the end of the meeting, for your three minutes. And so, I'm gonna, in person, I'm not seeing any. Online, just use your raise, raise your hand feature, and I'll wait awkwardly for a few seconds here. I am not seeing any, but if I somehow missed you, don't worry, there's another opportunity at the end of the meeting. So we'll move on to not select board update, 'cause I think we'll just wait until, if you all are okay with it, we'll just wait and let Danen speak when he comes in, at a time that makes sense. So then, breezing right along to principal report, Mr. Boardman, on BES.
So as of, I guess, the middle of last week, so our enrollment is still at 407. I think it's been right around 407 or 409 since the beginning of the year. Overall attendance, I feel like the numbers were in the principal report, so tracking, you know, students to offer support for students and families for, you know, excessive unexcused absences, and that stays pretty minimal for us. And our average daily attendance being at about 96%. Kinda feel like we would like to continue to see that be in that 96% to 98% range. I would say, just anecdotally, I feel like we are actually having a much more fluid time in the morning. We are not having as many students tardy. I feel like last year, we really struggled with, really struggled with that. And, you know, it was both parent drop-off and then just the way we were working with transportation to get, like, everything just seemed to be starting later. And I feel like this year, we, just everybody is getting in and getting settled at a, at a much quicker rate, so that's super helpful. Some of the things we're focusing on through our sort of MTSSA or academic area, I think probably the most prevalent thing is that our Tier 2 intervention has started. So when we're talking about that, we're talking about, we have two intervention teachers plus a reading specialist, as well as our Title I staff. And I put the numbers in there, but just to get a sense of how many students they are working with. So you can see there's between 14 students to 23 students, depending upon the grade level, which does include ECLC. So we are able to support Ms. Dealey and the students up at the ECLC as well for portions of the day. One of the other things that we tried to focus on this year was not just what we're doing to support those Tier 2 students during their success block or that pull-out time, but also trying to find ways to have our intervention team be able to push into the regular ed classroom and support teachers and students during their actual literacy block. So, kinda slightly a different model. You know, everybody is sort of adjusting to it. It's still the beginning of the year, so I think we're getting more comfortable with exactly what that looks like. Our MTSSB progress, so just where we're at with our, where we are at with our social, emotional, and behavior, as the two students who were just here presented, the positive pause challenge is certainly something we are continuing to do. The picture that was along with the principal report was just sort of the current state of what the bulletin board looks like, so you get an idea. I would say, both through our behavior referrals, but also just the general climate of the building, I do feel like some of these things are having a positive impact. I feel that it is normal in a school to always have some challenging days and some challenging situations, but by and large, I feel like we are in a really good place with how students and staff are all feeling and just the general tenor of how the building feels. We did just wanna put in there, and a little shout-out here, that we approached the PTO and requested and received an educator mini-grant to kinda help offset the cost of the stickers, the tokens, the bulletin board stuff, just some of the things that we're using for that. So we appreciate their support. Our October monthly SEL theme is goal-directed behavior. So we continue to utilize morning meeting and SEL teaching time to work with students around what that means. Slightly distracting. Anyway, getting back on track. Thinking about our school goals, to me, one of the things I just really wanna highlight, so if you don't know, Lori Benincasa is doing an administrative internship with me this year. And so we meet frequently, and her and Sarah and I were just sort of collaborating and reflecting. And this idea was sort of born to kind of mirror the Oscars, but we named it The Berries, Berry the Bulldog. And, and the idea is that we wanted to recognize, every morning on announcements, we do student shout-outs. Sometimes adults get shout-outs, but it's usually the kids who are shouting each other out, or teachers are shouting out cool things that kids have done. But we wanted to find a way that we could sort of more, I'm gonna say privately, meaning not in front of all the kids, but more privately between adults, recognize some of the cool things that the teachers are doing that really go above and beyond, you know, what, what might be normally expected. So hence the Berries were born. And at our last staff meeting, we were able to recognize Annabelle Boyle and Sam Lister for different reasons, but they were actually spur of the moment. We sort of shared with staff, "Hey, this is what we're gonna do." And people, like, on the spot came up with, "Oh, I would like to give a berry to, you know, Ms. Boyle, because she is a new staff member, and she has just gone above and beyond and stepped up and done some really amazing things with her kids and supporting staff." And then somebody else stepped up and recognized Mrs. Lister for specifically her supporting of a staff member who needed to be out for an extended period of time. So now the idea is that at next month's staff meeting, those two will hand it off to two other people, right? So just sort of keep the chain going. So, just something that we felt like was important to recognize, but also just help with our own climate and culture within our building. Finally, just some upcoming events, things to look forward to. Obviously, at this point, some of these things have already passed. Whole School Field Trip was a huge success. We went to the top of Mount Agamemnonus with 400, what'd I say, 7 kids and about 80-something adults, and just totally took over. And as I wrote to my parents this weekend, every volunteer that works for the mountain, every, you know, local resident who happened to walk upon this scene of people, and, like, totally changed their plan for the day, but they were all just so complimentary and impressed with our kids.
Not maybe it won't be as relaxing of a, it gives you a plan, but here we are.
How many, how many people went up?
Oh, all 400.
400?
Yep. And then all the adults were with them, too, so.
And they all came back?
They all came back. Um...
Safe, they have.
So I'm not gonna go through everything coming up, but obviously, the, you know, we, just like, the middle school and ECLC will be supporting the rec departments' fall family or family fall festival on October 26th. We have parent conferences coming up on the 4th and the 5th, and then Veterans Day. I did also put some pictures in there, 'cause I think it was literally the day I had to send this out. Chief and his crew came down, and we were able to do a safety exercise, but then we were able to go through programming for our 1st graders through some fire safety and fire prevention, which I believe some of the highlights were being able to play with the heat gun and then being able to, you know, be outside with the truck. So thank you, Chief, for that, and...
Thanks for having us.
That's a wrap for me.
Nice job.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Boardman? I just, I have a question. Does it, do the colors on the, I'm referring to the photograph in that's also in the board report, or for Mr. Boardman's report, there's a photo of the bulletin board. Do the colors mean anything different?
Yeah, so it's purposefully, it's sort of done that way, in terms of just the hallway, the cafeteria, and the bathroom. So, and, in part because the idea is that we share this picture with the kids and just very visually, we're able to say, "Okay, was it worth it?" So clearly, after that first time, the bathroom is a really tough one to give out stickers for.
I wasn't gonna call that out, but I was just wondering what those meant. Okay.
So, we recognize that, but it's also, it turns into a good talking point with the kids, right? To be like, "Okay, so we don't always recognize this, but what are ways that you could earn a sticker, right? For, you know, coming and telling us when, you know, there happens to be a mess or something's not working, and not just leaving it there." So, but yes, the colors do represent the different areas.
And then just the other last question I had was, it does not need to be a dissertation, but just, I know it's new this year for, for all of the buildings, the evaluation and observations plan, and just wanted to, just high-level, are you feeling like it's being receivable? Last time we talked about it was, it was when it was just rolled out, and I think sometimes when things are rolled out versus when they're implemented, can, things can change, or just...
Yeah, so so far, I would say both Sarah and I, I mean, I think it's great. And, you know, so I've already, like, it is part of our daily routine to just pop into classrooms, right? And you can imagine, oftentimes, that ends up happening kind of first thing in the morning, which means you see a lot of morning meetings, right? And you don't sort of see too much, because then the day gets going and you get pulled in different directions. And so what this has done is, it's given a safe way, for me, I mean, at this point, I think I have already cycled through everybody who needs at least one mini-observation that's on my list. So I've cycled through, I'm gonna say, 15 to 18 classrooms, for smaller periods of time, so it doesn't feel overwhelming, but not at morning meeting time, right? Like, I have been into their literacy blocks, I've been into their math blocks, I've seen part of their writing block. So I think just for, for me and my personality, and I think Sarah would agree, so far it seems to be going well, and it's been well-received by the teachers.
That's right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so we'll move on to our food service update with Ms. Conley.
So at our last month's meeting, there was, sorry, I gotta go.
Making sure that's not anybody, sorry, there was a, there was a car outside, hopefully, I don't know how sensitive the microphones are, if they can...
Outside of the parking lot.
I know, I'm like, is that mine?
It's not mine.
Did I hit my...
It's a green card that says screw, just can't be anyone.
It's a green card. A green card that says screw, yeah, okay.
So at last month's meeting, there were some great questions, just about our overall food service program, so we thought it would be helpful to pull together some information to fulfill the requests that you guys have and give some background information. So just to note, these data points were taken last week, so things have evolved a little bit in terms of our free and reduced numbers. But we had talked a little bit last week, you had some great questions about our percentages. And so I broke it down by building, and actually, in a short week's time, our numbers, our free and reduced numbers have already increased. So when I did this report, it was 8.04% for the district, and now it's up to 8.87%, because we're a small enough district that we are impacted easily when just three or four students qualify or apply. And then I broke down breakfast, so for the month of September, the number of breakfasts that are purchased at each building, and I separated it out. So the green is our free, the blue is reduced, and the pink is our paid. So that gives you an idea of what breakfast participation is looking like across an entire month at each building. On page 2, I did the same, but for lunch. So again, green is our free, reduced is blue, pink is paid. And that's for the entire month. And then you had asked, we had explored a little bit about what kind of our daily sales look like. The program doesn't allow me to find an average, so I just took two sample days to give you an idea of what lunch sales look like and what breakfast sales look like at each building. So the blue is a date in September, mid-September, and the pink is a date in early October. And you can see they're, they're fairly consistent across each building. There's not a whole range. I picked a pizza day. Somebody had brought up pizza day.
The pizza's so good.
I very purposely put in a Friday, which I believe is the October date.
It's a popular date.
So, that is a little bit about what it looks like. So for breakfast, we're looking on average at BES, anywhere in the, you know, 90 to 100 breakfasts. And then at BMS, this surprise me, we're really only looking at, you know, under 40. So those kids are coming in and getting right to advisory, whereas our elementary kids are really participating in some of our breakfast programming. And then for lunch, again, we're around that 150, 175 for sales. And at the middle school, we're, we're anywhere from 150 to 250.
Do you have a question? I'm ahead, so keep going. Nope, keep going.
And then the other question that came up was about the amount that families owe. And then the other question that came up was about the amount that families owe currently. And so as of the 7th, I was able to break it down by elementary school, middle school, and district. And that's just a cumulative total of the amount that is owed according to our registers.
I know, I know this is new, but just on, is this, not looking for exacts, but is this like normal for this to be this, at this level, this early in the year?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer to that question. Deanna is nodding her head yes.
Really?
It's typical.
And then at what point would we start that process that you outlined last time of reaching out?
We already have.
We already have.
Yeah, so letters go out pretty regularly to encourage families to.
So pun not intended, intended, how much did we eat last year? Like how much, how much debt was left over at the end of the year?
I'd have to go look, but I can send you guys that information for sure.
Thanks.
It, it tends to be around the $30,000 range.
We, we.
Fees?
Of unpaid, yeah.
$30,000 bucks of unpaid meals?
If you think about it, 10 months, they're trending at $3,000 right now.
That's, that's, that skyrocketed then.
So what has happened in past years is the past food service director used to, on her own time, would bake cakes.
Oh, right, the fundraiser.
And she would then donate her time to make them and staff would buy them. And then the profits would go back to paying off lunch balances. We also have a few, I don't even know if I can say their families, their individuals, because I don't know if they have kids in the district or not, because they like to remain anonymous, will donate money at the end of the year specifically for food. So that 30 comes down, but I can get you a history.
Yeah, it was irrespective of that conversation. Like I'm sure the generosity of the community has offset this. But I remember we're having, going through this exercise when we got, went to the lunch of shame and discovered the sun butter sandwiches and stuff. And we were expecting a huge spike and we didn't see it. We saw a slight one and then we got it under control right away. So I'm just wondering what has changed all of a sudden that people are just eating for free?
I think part of the issue was they, lunches and breakfasts were free through the COVID years.
And now they're just used to that?
And so we've had to continuously go back and say like, this is no longer free. And I think there's just some misunderstanding or false perceptions out there that, well, there must be monies because we had it given to us before. So those were federal, federal monies, we don't have those sources anymore.
There is an initiative for the state of New Hampshire to turn into, to provide those school lunches for all of New Hampshire public schools and public charter schools for free of charge for us. That hasn't happened yet.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see any kid go hungry that needs the food, right? But at the same time, I don't think, I don't think $30,000 bucks is going to kids that need it. I think this sounds like there's $30,000 of either laziness or people that are not aware that they should be paying for the lunches for their kids.
We'll definitely keep, keep an eye on that.
I'll get you a five-year look back.
I was gonna say, if we can do more than one year.
That way we can see, you know, actually.
I was gonna say, because that goes, jumps into, dips into COVID.
Well, I might, as I was gonna say, I might go a little further just so we can see the couple of years prior. We know the impact of the COVID years and there's going to be a year and a half that will not be good information because we didn't charge any student. And then I'll get you last year and what you have this year. So, yeah, let's look at it.
Thanks.
It's, it's an issue for us every year.
Yeah.
And it's not an uncommon issue across the state and every public school I know of, yeah.
I mean, do you put that in the budget, like $30,000 losses? So where do we, where do we steal the money out of them?
The bottom line.
All right.
When it starts to get out of hand, we start to look at other budget lines that we can be a little conservative with if we can to try to offset it if we've, our feel for old things are getting, I mean, close.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of some way to, you know, message. I mean, it sent a pretty strong message when you gave, sorry, you don't get to have lunch, you get to have this, and that was kind of embarrassing for the kid. So you don't want to go back to doing that, but there's got to be something we can, geez. Well, the field trip in January got canceled because we had to pay for school lunches for those kids that didn't pay for. No, you know, I'm not, not really suggesting that, but I'm suggesting something meaningful that people will say, oh geez, well, it does, it does mean something. I gotta, I better pay my kids lunch bills, you know?
I will say that the piece of this that was a little surprising to me, because I've only ever looked at the district's total, I really thought that the middle school debt would have been greater than the elementary debt.
That's what I was surprised about.
Because students of that age and because we have more, you know, you go to elementary line, you're getting your hot or your cold lunch and that's it. You go to middle and you can, you have options and you have add-ons. And so I know a lot of families have called us in the past like, hey, you know, my kid's in debt and I'm not approving this, when in reality they have the ability to go on their account and manage that, so.
So, so let's say my kid's in there and you, you know how much money Garth Spence and Widow, right? Like you, you have an account and you know how much, okay, my kid has been charging. Do you know what they're charging?
Yep.
So could you, I wonder if the answer is, you know, we don't go back to sun butter, but you say until the lunch thing is paid, you can only get.
Your standard school lunch.
Right, you don't get to have the extras.
We can do that. The struggle with doing that is to take the time to have every student to look up their balance and make that decision. Your line would take forever to, for them to get through.
And I want to be wary of doing anything that would affect the child, since it's not the child who owes, you know what I mean, that owes the balance?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not talking about, you know, jeopardizing their nutrition. I'm talking about jeopardizing the fun snacks, you know? You know, and that's, I think that's all, and then, because then the kid will go home and complain and say, I couldn't get my cookie today. And maybe then mommy will send the check in or pay online or whatever, I don't know.
Well, they can't purchase extras if there's nothing in their account, so.
So the only thing they're getting is.
Yeah, you can't just continuously charge, charge, charge. You can't go up and get a random extra bottle of water or a bag of sun chips or whatever if you have no money. They'll let you get lunch only to a certain point and then the notice goes out. So you can't get the extras.
Can I add to that the, it's some, it may or may not be a big chunk of it, but students that are qualified under McKinney-Vento, if they qualify in February, but really they didn't notify us or we weren't aware of them being McKinney-Vento until February and they didn't have money to charge for lunches, it's the date that they're determined McKinney-Vento. So all that back money they're expected to owe, even though they didn't have the funds and didn't come forward before that or we didn't find them, right? So I would imagine with our like tighter free and reduced application process that we're doing, and also we're finding McKinney-Vento a lot faster right now than we have in the past. Hopefully that will reduce some of those excess costs because it's all determined based on the date of qualification for free and reduced, direct certified from the state, McKinney-Vento, all of those things are factors. So whatever their back balance is, doesn't get waived. It's moving forward from that date. And we see a lot of those families with high balances.
So for clarification, if you go online and those in the room who may not be aware, McKinney-Vento is families who are experiencing displaced out of their homes or doubling up with family members or friends as a result of that kind of a concern.
Well, yeah, let's definitely get another report and then just have this be something that we follow up with every few meetings just to see where things are going. Because that's a lot, lot bigger than I expected you to say. Woo, all right. All right, anything else, any other questions? Thank you so much for that information, that was great. Started a great conversation. Okay, so then the next thing on the agenda is the attendance at the semi-annual Cobrown Joint Board Meeting, which is November 13th. I know I can attend.
I just need to be able to give them a number and an RSVP, so.
I can attend and, and welcome. They don't have like a cap on how many people can go, so it's just a number. So I'm happy to, to go.
You can go.
Very excited. Hope they have good cookies.
I would, I would say the meeting at the end of the year has much more relevant information to our particular students, the beginning of the year. This meeting is more so programmatic overview and a tour. So if you've been like, I have multiple times, we'll let Carrie go.
I, I have also been, but it's been a few years, so I'll, I'm happy to, I'm happy to go.
I will, RSVP on your behalf.
They did have these really great cookies this one time, so I'm really hoping maybe they'll happen again.
I remember Dave saying that.
They're so good, I went with Dave, they were so good.
And they weren't there.
Never mind, I'm available that night now.
Very good. I'll sneak a few in my purse.
Actually, I believe in it.
Big purse.
I do, I bring big purses all the time. All right, so the next up is the collaboration regarding reduced speed school zone signs.
So there's a draft, a letter in the packet. This went to the Select Board on the 7th. And they voted unanimously to support that joint letter going forward to the state. Essentially, you know, they've given us permission in past years, permission to do it, not the funding to go with it. So, you know, I think everybody would agree that the increased traffic in town is causing increased concern on Routes 9 and 125. We don't really have a good sense on cost at this point, but we're just looking to see if you all are in favor of just the joint letter going forward to the state to confirm that ability to look into that. We, of course, will ask them for funding, not so confident we'll get it. The response multiple years ago that was shared with me was, well, you all decide to build your schools there, so have at it, right?
Said that to us 25 years ago.
Yep, this isn't a long issue. So, you know, ideally, we would love the flashing light that's here to also be out at the middle school. But what we do know is once signs are put up, if they do not grab your attention in some way and they are static, you don't see them anymore. So when Connor and I met recently, we had talked about, you know, really wanting to look into the cost for all signing from just basic, you know, put a sign up on a pole all the way to signs that would, you know, flash during the school arrival and dismissal and potentially even show your speed.
That's.
That's the one that I wanted, that's the one that I want, the speed, the one that shows your speed.
Yeah, so of course that involves electrical and whatnot, but with our new signs, we have electrical out on the streets anyway.
I've seen the ones that are newer that have the solar, I don't know what the, that have the solar.
There's a great one on Toll Road that slows me down every time. Because I never think this is supposed to be going that slow. And I like the fact that it says, thank you.
That's what I said at the meeting. I was like, thank you or slow down.
I'm like, oh, you're welcome.
Mine often tells me to slow down, but yeah.
You're seeing them in, in many more communities now. I'm seeing them a lot when I'm driving through, not just in front of schools, but towns are putting them in just to remind people in the center of town like, hey, you know, it's 30 or 35.
Did you mention, mention the cost for this at the last meeting? Or did they say that this was.
That we don't know any of the costs and they didn't say at the select morning meeting, it's that we're going to research the costs because we, we can't really, I think it needs to be presented to everyone, probably brought to our committee first and.
So, so I think there's two things I'd like to see. I'd like to, I'd like to, for us to vote tonight, to ask the town to use our funds to cover the cost of it. Because they've got some money and as long as they earmark it, I don't, I don't have any idea what they, if they've got all the money earmarked for what, what they got left. But I still think it's worth asking them if they would potentially use our funds to cover the cost. And if, if they won't cover the, if they can't or won't cover the entire cost, if they'll split the thing 50/50, where might we find the money for our 50%? Do you have an idea?
So it depends on what the cost of the signage is, right? And where we decide to go with it. I think simple signage, we could certainly fund within the budget. We also have a healthy facilities capital reserve that we could take it from. We also could look to budgeting it for the upcoming, you know, fiscal year as well.
And it probably makes, maybe the upcoming year makes more sense because it's probably something that wouldn't get installed till next summer.
You mean they're not going to come run out and do this, do this for us immediately? I know, yeah.
Jackhammer in the middle of January.
The other thing that Connor had mentioned was using funds from the Tiff District because it falls within that realm to, to support that as well.
Certainly that's another option too.
I think, you know, I think to further what you just said, we, I think we all would like to ask the town what they, if they'd be willing to come up with it either out of their, their funds or the Tiff District and then, or if not all of it, we'd be willing to split it with them or something like that and we'll figure that out.
So for tonight, it sounds like we have agreement that everybody wants to move forward, so we just need.
Well, the letter's already written saying that we're unanimously.
Well, it's draft.
It says draft.
It's draft, it doesn't say it on ours, it doesn't show on ours, but it is.
So I'd like to make a motion that we.
We don't have to, we don't have to vote on it. Nope.
On the.
On the paper, oh, I thought you meant of using the.
Yeah, not the funding, just that we want to send the joint letter. Yes, it does say draft, I don't know why yours, oh, you didn't.
Yeah, ours doesn't say draft, but I saw on yours it does.
Got to sign your copy, I'll send it off tomorrow.
All right, I'll make, I'll entertain a motion for approving the letter as, as written and representing us in this collaboration. Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Joke, goodness gracious.
Okay, so that's the state. Why, now, what's the status of this gate over here? It's not closed all the time. There's people whipping in and out of there on a regular basis.
So we actually just talked about that today. I had said in the last district newsletter that's warning people yet again, like we're making incremental steps to it being closed again. And the last phase of that is that it's going to be closed at the end of the school day. So right now it is closed during the school day. So once arrival is done, it's meant to be an exit only for passenger vehicles. Buses and emergency vehicles obviously can come in. It's part of our arrival dismissal process to keep people off of 125. So the last stage is at 4 o'clock or when that last dismissal is done, then it gets closed because I almost got hit the other day myself.
So my point being is it's still going to be being used, right?
Just at arrival and dismissal.
But still being used.
Yes.
Why wouldn't we put a couple of signs on Malago as well that says school zone?
Yep, I actually have notes on my desk about signage. So we're looking at upgrading signage in a variety of places right now. ECLC primarily, there's some signage that is, you know, two feet off the ground. Nobody could possibly see that. So we're just trying to wrap our head around all of the upgrades that we need so that we can put one border in and do it at the same time.
So Malago's in the works then?
Absolutely, yeah, to, you know, on one side.
You and that gate, man.
No, I have.
It doesn't fit two people, it's not safe.
No, I know, but no, my, my ears burn because I've got concerned citizens that bring it to my attention.
Yeah.
Me too.
Regularly.
Me too. And one of them watches the meetings and says, I'll be looking for you to say something about this. And oh my, oh my God, I did 25 years ago. I'll, I said it 25 years ago and I stand by it today. I was probably the driving force to have that, that put in as a driveway to service this building being constructed because I didn't want to see dump trucks and construction equipment driving through the school. And then came up with the bright idea that, well, this is here. Why don't we leave it there as an emergency exit for the building? In hindsight, being 2020, 25 years ago, what I should have said was, just put a nice big dirt burn there and plant habibiyas on top of it and be done.
No, I appreciate the easy access to the S.A.
The people in the neighborhood, they hate it.
I know, I had to turn around every once in a while. It was shut last time, I tried to use it.
I think we, I think if we make some efforts to slow folks down, I think that would be very much appreciated.
Tomorrow at 3:45, that gate will be closed. How's that?
I had one individual, probably the same one that you're talking about, came up to me and goes, you are alive. And I'm like, because you said over your dead body would they ever open that to let vehicles drive through?
Is it closed on the weekends too?
No, because we haven't, haven't been closing at the end of the day. So now, when it gets closed at the end of the day on a Friday, it won't open again until Monday morning.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we need to.
Is it, and just being serious, like I've joked before about that gate, but I'm being serious. The, is it, is it in the best interest to lock it up for the weekends? I mean, I don't think anyone's whipping around it, but if you want kids to, do we allow people to use the playgrounds on the weekends and stuff like that?
They can come in the main, they can just use the main.
For years it was closed. So, I mean, people will adjust, they're not going to like it initially because it's become new habit, right, to come that way. We had to retrain our staff.
Hi, 911, I'm stuck at a gate at the back of the school I'm used to being able to get into?
Well, and my concern is there have been people who have then chosen to park there and walk into here and leave their car on the other side. So the other thing we'll need to monitor is in years past, there was actually a lock on it because people like to just get out of their car.
Push it open.
Undo it and push it open and drive through. So if we need to actually lock it again, we will do that. It, I know it sounds like a little thing, but it actually costs an individual or multiple individuals a lot of time to walk down, unlock it, wait for arrival dismissal, walk back, lock it, like it's a lot of back and forth.
Well, that's why you laughed at my proposal, but to have that little EZ Pass thing where you could pull up to it and it would just swing open.
Don't laugh because Joe mentioned that today. We're actually, he doesn't think it would be that expensive. We're going to look into it because you can have key cards for your bus drivers, give them to fire and PD and then.
And other individuals that might need one.
Oh my. He'll be first in line for his. He'll be first in line for his...
I mean...
That do not include staff or board members, so...
I can pretty much assure you from a fire perspective, we're going to come down 125, we're coming in, we're putting main entrance, just because, again, to pull up there and go, oh, great, there's a lock on there, now we got two choices, we can either cut a link out of the chain and come in, and now you got an unsecured gate after, or you just don't bother, just continue right now, 125, come in and do what you gotta do. Thankfully, we don't come down here very often, so it's really complicated.
I mean, it was locked for years, as we all know, so...
I think the bigger issue is, is trying our best to appease the people in the neighborhood and get less traffic coming out of here and roasting down these roads, especially, there's one individual, it's got a dog about this big that...
Yes, I'm concerned about that dog.
He likes to walk, yeah, I'm concerned about the dog.
Yeah, there's also, there's mailboxes I'm concerned about, too.
All right, it's, exiting is not as bad as the people...
Trying to come in.
Look, exiting is bad in the parking lot itself, because people whip through here, but it's the people coming around and in that makes me really uncomfortable.
Well, that was, that was a concern of the boards 25 years ago when I was on it, was is that if that gate were to be used, you know, this being an elementary school and a lot of young kids in there would be devastating, that if, heaven forbid, somebody, you know, these people figure out now that with that gate open...
Skip the light.
And at seven o'clock in the morning, they can dial right through here and get out and be halfway down 125 before you get to the stoplight.
That's right.
So, you know, all it takes is that one person to know that, hey, I gotta get through there at 20 miles an hour, and some kid gets out of the car and runs to the front door of the building and...
Hey, you want to drop a concrete berm in there, you, I would not be upset about it.
Well, you know, there's something, there really is something to be said about speed bumps, other than when you got to plow snow, that's...
Right.
Isn't it so?
That's no fun.
All right, all right, moving on to the update from the October 3rd District and Town Collaborative Communication Committee meeting, and the bullet points thus underneath, did you want...
Well, so the first one is just notifying that, I know the Select Board has adjusted the purchasing policy on their end to reflect that when the school district has put an RFP out and vetted a potential vendor, that they would in turn not initiate their own process to save, obviously, time and energy for all those involved, and would accept, you know, the work that we had done, and so we're just looking to have that conversation to basically do the same on our end. So, we will bring that to Policy Committee on Thursday to have that conversation.
That actually sounds good. And the voter guide?
Voter guide came up, so the town, as we know, puts out a very lengthy, detailed voter guide, and at our last meeting, it was also mentioned, like, is that something that the board would want to either do in tandem with or have our own voter guide, so that is up for discussion this evening as well.
Yes, during the meeting, I discussed maybe changing the verbiage from, because I know I interchange town, meaning Barrington as a town, and then town, meaning the town actual town budget, and so a suggestion I made was that, it actually came from Deanna's idea of just change, you know, instead of calling it town, we can call it community, so I think we should just make it a community's voter's guide, and that in conjunction with the school, the school would still write our own, but that we would have our own voter's guide, especially for a year like this year, where there's a lot, going to be a lot of warrant articles that are going to involve a lot of, probably some description, just so that our voters are informed, we'll do the same, a lot of the discussion was just following the same template that they're using, so that it's consistent and the same coloring format and things like that, which makes a lot of sense marketing-wise, so I know it's something new, but they also have their ABC write a statement on some of their warrants as well, and so I like, Deanna and I and Rick really like the format, I think it would be a great addition, I know that it's more work, but it's something that's not really new, we talked about this as part of an initiative to work with community, communicating better with the community, so...
And I think to follow up with what Carrie is saying is, is that some people, it's a lot like, you put it in the perspective of, you know, the zoning articles, which is what you see at the very beginning of every voting thing, and some people take, make the effort to contact the town and the planner and to try to get a good handle on what exactly is it that this is looking for us to do if we support it or we don't support it. And some, and in some cases, and that's why a lot of zoning articles fail, is that people don't follow up on it, they don't understand it, so they go, you know what, I'm just going to vote no, because I don't know what it is, so I'll just vote no, and I don't want to change something. And I think, you know, when we look at, we're going to have two contracts this year, right? I think it's important to have that in three.
Well, we've got the high school contracts and the teacher contract.
So, but there'll be two high school contracts, correct? And I think that's important for people to understand that, look, we like the system that we have, it appears that the people that went out to the meetings, and we like having school choice, and I think that's something we don't necessarily want to take away, but I think it's important for people to understand what the ramifications are, that it's, look, if you don't support these things, we're not going to have school choice anymore, we're going to have one school.
It also might give us an opportunity to explain why Co-Brown isn't on there, so that there's no misunderstanding that has, keeps plaguing us about that, so...
And we already submit a town report, and so as you were just saying that out loud, I'm thinking to myself, maybe, maybe it should be a report to the community of Barrington, and we've got the town information and the district information, because I think people do get confused, or maybe a little opinionated, when you, when we say things like, oh, the money's going back to the town, right? They don't have the knowledge or the understanding that what that means is it's going back to the community taxpayers as a whole, but some people literally interpret that as, oh, it's going to the town hall, like, the town, the entity, the town gets the money.
Or there's a disparate number of voters which only will vote for the town, and then never, don't use our ballot, and don't ever, don't vote, because there's always a disparate number, so...
I'm sure there's a simple answer to this, but I remember years ago, we had a concern about using the phone system to, like, robo-call folks to say, like, tomorrow's voting day, because it was, like, there's some, there's some law that says you can't use, like...
Oh, I'm sure there is some law sort of...
Something that, like, you're lobbying using public funds or something like that, and you're using your call list or something, so...
Right.
You've got to make sure that whatever we're doing here, I don't know, whatever law that was, and if it doesn't even apply to, can you just create your own voter guide? Because you're basically lobbying, saying, "Vote for what we are putting forth," and you're using taxpayer funds to do that, I'm not sure what, there's got to be a line there, so you better check with legal, just to see what we're allowed, you know, again...
Yeah.
Maybe we can't, like, infer, like, this is a good idea, maybe we just, maybe we just write, like, this is what it does.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know that the town one is very factually based.
What?
It's very factually based, but that's...
What is going to be supporting, it would really just look like the warrants do that go forward to, on voting day, just to say, here's the warrant, and here's an explanation of what that is, and here's how the ABC and the board voted.
Town weeks in that group, you know, I don't know, dozen years ago...
Advocates for Better Barrington?
Yeah, and if you, you know, at first, when I first looked at that, I was like, but then I, as I started paying attention to it, they did a pretty good job of not necessarily...
Until the end, they did great until the last, like, two years, and then it became a very partisan document.
Well, and we already sent out a postcard with both the district and the town information to encourage people to vote for the budget, so we do that in tandem already, but I will ask that question for sure. I do recall that.
Always good to just double check, yeah.
I mean, back in the day, teachers' unions used to get on the phone, right, and take phone calls and encourage, remember? And, like, you just, you can't do that anymore.
You can't?
No.
No.
The unions can't?
They can't, they can't use, like, our parent information system to then have that master list of, and then use it to say, hey, go, come support our contract.
Okay, yeah, no, that would be bad, but they could, but yeah, there's nothing stopping them from just going out and lobbying in general, as individuals, even as an organized unit to go out and take it, support the budget. All right, yeah.
Yeah, so more info, I'm sure will come from that, and then the BMS parent conferences, voting day conflict?
So, this is a tough situation, because we know that the parking lots get crowded, however, contractually, you know, that's a workday for teachers, and so we have come up with some options for parking, but in order to change that, people would have to be willing to do a memorandum of understanding and change the day and time in which they are conducting conferences, which is not favorable at this point, so our thought...
I'm sorry, what's the, I know I wasn't there at the last meeting, but why is this a conflict? I thought we were just scheduling teacher conferences on voting day.
Traffic, yes.
It came up in our collaborative meeting, and the issue was, is that when you get a presidential election, and the Attorney General right now is saying that they expect 80% turnout in the state of New Hampshire on average, so if you had 80% of the registered voters of the town of Barrington trying to get into that school in what amounts to be a 10-hour window, and you've got, how many teachers in that building?
About 60 staff, yeah.
So, if you've got 60 staff vehicles there, and now parents trying to come in on scheduled time for their conference, it, the last presidential election at nine o'clock, the police chief and I, and two police officers were just telling, you know, people were just pulling up and parking on grass, and they were, they were parking in places they shouldn't park, and, you know, and we, we had that, it's that eight o'clock window where, when they start, the voting starts, and you've got that block of people that want to be the first ones in to vote, usually you get a good rush there, and it stays pretty steady until...
I thought we had figured, like, I thought there, this has been a problem for years, right, but I thought that one year you guys came up with a genius idea, and it was much better, was that you staggered them, and it was like, so that not everybody was coming, I can't remember how it worked, but it was, there was something that had alleviated a...
Yeah, I mean, they are staggered throughout the day, they can, we do Monday night conferences till six, and then different teams have different times on Tuesday, and we also ask the staff to park up at that dirt parking lot that we were talking about earlier tonight.
So, our plan is to, when you're facing the building, leave the entire left-hand lot, because that's where they go in to vote, voting only, blocking off the back end, so nobody can drive around the back of the building from a safety perspective, and having the right side and the front lot be for conferences, and blasting the signage out everywhere, so that when people are done voting, they will loop back around and exit, not go behind the building, because we'll have, the sign obviously currently says one way, right, but we will make an exception for that day, so people can park along the side and attend their conferences, so being very clear that staff absolutely has to park up at the soccer field lot, walk into the building, so those cars will stay put for the day, and then conferences, parking to the right-hand side and voting to the left.
How many vehicles can you typically get up in that parking lot, do you know, ballpark?
I don't know.
Probably 60, you'd say?
So, the majority of the staff will be able to park up there, if not all of them, honestly.
Is the entire staff in that?
Yeah, no, pairs are...
Yeah, pairs are, not six.
So, it'll be fewer, we'll be able to have staff be up there.
Okay.
And then I think it's a conversation with the teachers moving forward around, you know, how, how do we want to manage this, because it's, it's been an issue.
Yeah, it's come up.
We may as well come up with a long-term solution, instead of every other year going, oh geez, what are we going to do?
And, you know this better than me, because you work for the town, why can't we have multiple polling stations in town?
Well, I think, I think you could, the problem is, is getting poll workers, and they struggle as it is to, you know, let's just, I'm just picking a dumb number, because I don't know what it is, but let's just say they need 20 people to operate with inside the building, now you need 40 or 60, and in some years, they, they actually end up getting, you know, instead of having 20, they got 15, so they have to try to, so that's really what the issue is back.
What, nobody wants to be a poll worker in this climate? I can't believe it, that's crazy. Yeah, and then, it's a collaboration, because, I mean, really, the, running the polls is not the school's job, that's the town, so it's a town problem, and we're willing to help accommodate, but, I mean, they got to have some help here directing traffic.
Well, the issue is, is like...
If they're expecting 80% turnout, as Chief says.
And I can't be asked, you know, in the fall, because it's a calendar change, and then I'm having to change, not only come to you all to change the calendar, but it impacts families who have already made the plans, and a lot of the educators have already put it out.
That's Teacher Conference Day.
It's Teacher Conference Day.
So, when there's not a, when there's not a presidential election, so the other three years, do you still typically do parent conferences on your own?
Yeah.
So, that, it's not an issue then?
No.
Because there's nothing else going on in the building?
Which I think is why we've never solved it long-term, because it's a once every four-year issue, and then we sit here and scratch our heads, and then it, it always comes up when it's too late. So, we set the school year calendar the previous December.
So, could we, as you get ready to set the school calendar, and I'll ask, I'll just ask this question for consideration, but if you moved it off the first Tuesday of November, moved it to the second Tuesday of November, so that now, you know, now every four years you're not dealing with it, because it's going to be a week further on.
The conference?
Because then it would be a school day, and then we'd have students in the building that day.
And that's, and that's, this is how we dodge that issue, because a lot of folks flip out about having the kids intermingling with...
Rightfully so.
Voters.
So, but, but that's what I'm so, like, next year, when there's not a presidential election, you're doing it on the first Tuesday of November, which is, what are you doing with the kids?
It's Parent Conference Day, so the kids are off.
Kids are not there. So, my question is, could we consider either moving it to the second Tuesday of November, or move it to the last Tuesday of October?
So, we can put it wherever we want, the issue is, then, your parent, shouldn't I won't say Parent Conference Day, Voting Day would then just be a day off of school.
I got you.
Because otherwise, we would have kids and teachers in the building that day, and with the change in the gun carry laws, we don't do that.
Yeah, and it wasn't just the parents, there was actually the police chief actually raised concerns about...
Yes, about his concern over that safety, so we made that change years ago by going to the union, this was pre me, but going to the union and saying, hey, how do you feel about that always being Conference Day, so that we don't have students in the building, and then they were in agreement with that, and that change was made.
So, humor me for a half a second.
It's not going to be half a second.
We will still humor you.
Four years from now, how do we fix this problem?
Fabulous question, we need to do some brainstorming and come up with a solution.
This is December, right, when we, when we go to discuss the calendar, I think that might be a better time to figure out a long-term solution, but for this, right now, you need, we need what?
So, I will tell you, it's going to be a trick, and here's why. So, there's a new, not, it's not new any longer, but there's an RSA in the state of New Hampshire that our calendar cannot vary by more than 10 days with the other schools that have, that we send to career technical centers, and it, so I actually have a meeting next week, we start the conversation early, because I know by contract Dover has to propose their calendar to their board, the first meeting in December, I think, which is why we do it so early, and they have, not just they, the other towns that I mean, need to collaborate with, because we share students in attendance at career technical centers, they all have pretty strict requirements within their teacher contracts, so certain days must be off, must be this, must be, must be, must be, and so when you reconcile all the must-bes, there are very few days left with any...
With flex, yeah.
And so, and we're not allowed to vary by more than 10, 10 days, so I know it sounds little, because it's one day, but it, it's a, it's a trick to get all of those school calendars to align within that 10-day window. We end up meeting five or six times before we reach agreement, or I shouldn't even say agreement, and what works, and understanding of the calendars. So, and because we're the ones sending, you know, unless it's something within our teacher contract, I sort of sit quietly while they all flush it out, because, you know, they have...
So, typically on that day, pardon my ignorance, typically on that day, at what point are the vast majority of the teachers have they left? Is it two o'clock in the afternoon? Is it two o'clock in the afternoon or three o'clock?
I mean, I should say it varies, because of, you know, personal preference, personal family commitments, as well as just the needs of their students' families in any particular year. So there are times when, you know, you can get a majority of your conferences done the evening before, you have some to finish up, you know, families who need or want daytime schedules, and then you're done. We do have a requirement for how long they stay, because they're fulfilling a contractual day between the previous evening and the next day. Some people don't do a lot of evening conferences, and they work the whole regular workday the next day.
I guess that's what I meant by staggering. Why can't we stagger even more and have them go throughout the afternoon? Like you said, everyone's out of there by two o'clock. Why don't you say that one batch is the evening before, one batch is in the morning, and one batch is in the afternoon?
Because we go to families' needs and their schedules first, so some-
So families prefer to have an eleven a.m. meeting rather than a four p.m. meeting?
Not necessarily, but we offer the evening prior, and then it's one workday. So I can't have somebody doing a eight a.m. parent conference and on, say, the Tuesday, and then also a four p.m., because now that's outside of their contracted time. If they've also done the previous evening, it's an extra.
What is? I'm sorry, so if they, if they, let's say they do a block on, and I don't know the answer, don't, please, it's just, I'm an idiot. So you're gonna do, let's say you get three hours' worth of conferences on Thursday, Monday night?
Yep.
Okay. They come in for three and a half hours, whatever it is, at conferences on Tuesday morning? Why wouldn't they skip, why wouldn't it be okay to skip Tuesday morning and come in for three and a half hours on Tuesday afternoon?
If they were in agreement, you could do that.
So it's not about family preference, it's about the-
It's both.
Okay.
Well, I guess it would be pretty hard for, to expect a teacher, you know, their expectation is if they have to be in that building-
Yeah, my workday is this to this.
So I get that piece of it, and, you know, I guess, how, how would they compensate it if they do schedule parent-teacher conferences the night before? How is that, so if they're there three hours, they don't have to be here three hours the next day?
Right, they get to leave early. So I think what you were saying, Garth, is that they don't come in at eight a.m. or seven thirty, wait until the afternoon. You could, it would just be a matter, it would be managing all the logistics, you know, like asking the staff, like, okay, who wants to do this? And then what do you do when there's outliers of people who can't meet at those times?
My only thought was, you're trying to minimize traffic, right? So I'm thinking, well, if they're willing to, and they said, yeah, I don't care, I'll take the morning off, sleep in and go get coffee and breakfast, and then I'll come in in the afternoon and do my conferences, and let's say it's ten teachers that say they want to do that, that's a lot of cars that aren't coming in at that, you know, that morning, I don't know.
I think the CBA makes it challenging.
How so?
Because that language is not in there, whether they're required to work a night, right?
A night, I said an afternoon.
Right, but just-
They're making accommodation to work on Monday night, is that what it is?
Yeah, instead of, instead of all day Tuesday. It's not, the language around parent-teacher conferences is not in their CBA. Some districts do have the requirement and the expectation right in their CBA for parent-teacher conferences, ours do not.
And so they're pretty passionate about, okay, we'll do it Monday night, but only if we do Tuesday morning? Like, that's, that's, some are?
Yeah, that's what past practice has been. There's been a lot of conversation about it this year.
Okay. And they, like, I just don't know, like, I just, would seem to me, like, I could see myself, if it was my workday, I'd be like, I don't care, I'll sleep in tomorrow and come in in the afternoon and do conferences. But if they're passionate about it, I guess, but maybe some of them wouldn't be passionate about it, I don't know.
Well, it's just that it leaves it up to too much chance. I can't, four years from now, be like, hey, who wants to do this? Because what if I don't get a lot of people volunteer? And then it's not gonna work.
So could, could a teacher, if you started doing conferences at two-thirty on Monday afternoon, and did conferences till eight p.m. Monday night, that's five and a half hours, could a typical teacher get all their conferences done in that five-and-a-half-hour window?
Nope.
Are you asking for an opportunity to edit the, or to make an MOU on it, even though I know you don't want to go that route?
For this year?
For this year? No? Okay, so you're just saying, let's find another solution?
Well, the solution is the separate parking and traffic flow and signage. We're just looking for solutions moving forward.
If you're, so is it safe to say that you'd have thirty-five staff here that day, probably the pairs don't come in?
Yeah.
So if you had thirty-five cars up there, then perhaps the thing would be to have corner, encourage poll workers to also park up there?
Yep.
And leave that main parking lot as much as possible to people coming in to vote and coming in for their staffing.
Yeah, anybody that's gonna be there for the day, or a chunk of the day, should park up in the gravel lot and walk down to the building, if they're able, obviously. Otherwise, that way we can keep that entire side, I mean, it's a pretty big lot.
Generally speaking, four-thirty, five o'clock at night, they could, before it gets dark, they could walk up and get their car and drive it down to the main parking lot, if they're not comfortable walking up there in the car.
I mean, you're, from a staff and a parent conference perspective, there is the potential to be some strugglers, but I would say by noon time-
But they could also park on the max side of the building too, right? Over where the teachers, where the teachers park on, I'll call it the D side of the building. There's a, parallel to Route Nine, there's some angled parking.
So those are the ones that we're gonna leave for the parents coming in for conferences?
Oh, parents, I gotcha.
So they'll be able to park in the front and along that whole side.
I would suggest that we also reach out to, I know, to Chief Joy about maybe having somebody back there or along that side, because I just know from experience that, you know, when parking is completely gone, they're not gonna look, they're gonna ignore the sign and go park wherever they want to. If you're trying to get conferences done, that's gonna be a problem.
I know that when, you know, when they do, when, last year, when the Chamber of Commerce did the-
Craft Fair.
Craft Fair. Even before that, when Friends of Music done it, it's a giant pain. Last year, we went around and I met the guy, and we taped off a lot of areas so they couldn't park on the grass. We, you know, that's a huge deal, we shouldn't be letting people park on the grass, because these guys work hard to keep the lawns and stuff looking nice around the buildings, and it's enough that the kids play out there and stuff. But when you stop, when people stop parking in places that were never intended to be parked, and you got car tires and truck tires that start beating down the grass-
We got a trailer parked out on the front lawn, what's the difference?
All right.
That's gonna be a permanent shrike that you got, that's just gonna sit there forever.
Well, thank you for coming up with a temporary solution.
That's awesome.
When we come, when we come up to, we're organizing the calendar later in the year, this sounds like something we can put our minds to then, so.
And seriously, you know, they're smarter than I am. Ask them, the union or the teachers, and say, like, here's a legitimate problem every four years, how would you guys like to, I mean, is enough of you would say, yeah, I'll do Tuesday afternoon? And if not, I understand, like, if they're passionate about keeping their Monday night and their Tuesday morning, and I want to be out of there by eleven-thirty a.m., because then I have all day off, I get it, but like, you know, if half of them are saying, I could care less, like, then great, that solves it, so, you know, I don't know.
I don't think you're gonna see that.
I don't, I just don't, I just don't know, like, I don't, you know.
Yeah, I think it's more a union and some middle-school staff conversation. Because you're not gonna get a, it's just the middle school.
Yeah, I don't wanna push it down their throats, I'm more like, go to them and say, what do you guys think? You know, as a whole.
How do you want to manage this?
And that way make it a tradition, or, you know, I don't have to memorialize it or put it in their contract, but just say, that's the way we kind of done things in the past, and all of a sudden, four years from now, that new group says, you know, makes a stink, well, that's kind of the way we've done it, like, you know, really want to change it, you know, type of thing?
But that's part of the problem, because it's only a problem every four years.
And there's esteem.
You know, and by the time you, you know, next year, we'll have forgotten all about the problem this year.
Then maybe we put it, maybe we put it down, that every four years, this is kind of how we've gotta figure out something, get through it.
All right, school district used town gas pumps and salt-sand supply. So years passed, we used to go fill up sand, salt, and vehicles at the town, and then a variety of circumstances over the years occurred, where we were no longer had the staff to share staff, and so collaboration and services kind of separated, and I know that has come forward again as, you know, hey, why are you guys running off and buying gas cards and buying your own sand? We have it right here. And in the spirit of collaboration and the new committee, we have said anything that came to the committee, this would go through the board, so that's just up for your discussion and consideration this evening.
So I'll just, I'll just say this, I'm a firm believer that we should be, I don't, you know, the gas cards are the gas cards. To me, it's, you know, the town has said in collaboration meetings, town minister has flat-out said that the school district can go over there and get diesel fuel and gasoline. No, they can do it tomorrow. I'm not a proponent of the fact that, I get it, but we got gas cards for the mobile station. Mobile station is the most expensive fuel in town. Usually it's ten or twelve cents a gallon more.
They have better donuts.
Have you seen some of the donuts on the highway?
Stay on focus, stay on focus.
So the idea being is that I still believe that in the spirit of cooperation, we should be going up there and getting fuel. And I had a conversation with Joe, I'm not gonna necessarily speak to him, but we had a conversation on primary day, and I think it makes sense for the school to go up and get their salt and sand up there for a number of different reasons, including the fact that if they're going to continue to do it from here, they're not necessarily always gonna have a piece of equipment here to do it with, and they need to, work needs to be done on the canvas roof of the shelter, which I guess doesn't really make sense to do right now, Joe, does that make sense?
What we were looking at is, we were looking at doing metal, we were able to find a replacement top for that for two hundred dollars, so we have that top in place.
Just remember, sir, I mean, I don't plow up here, but like, I thought there was some benefit to having the sand and, like, the gas card seems like a no-brainer, like, we should be buying our fuel over there, because it's a lot cheaper. But like, I thought that having our own sand and salt over here was, A, more convenient, and B, with the amount that we buy, it wasn't saving us any money by going up to the town.
But you're not paying for it, if you go to the town, you know, and that was my thing, you don't even pick it up.
So last year, we used thirty-two tons at a hundred and thirty dollars a ton, so four thousand one hundred and sixty bucks.
But again, getting it at the-
And if, if it's okay, I wouldn't mind picking it up and just bringing it over here, so we have it here. Take a couple, you know, we used thirty-two tons last year, so if we get a one ton of it, a couple of one tons, and stockpile it for the beginning, and then if we start to run low and make a phone call.
You know, Mark has trucks at the hot mountain too, so he takes one of his six-wheelers and loads that up and comes over and dumps it, now, you know, hauling two one-ton loads, I mean, but I don't think, whatever.
That's great.
Yeah, it's a great, did Deanna or Joe, any, do you foresee any issues or have any comments that you wanted to add to, to it, or are we just, we're good?
Yeah.
Four thousand dollars, if you're not buying the salt, the town, I mean, whether you buy it and have it delivered here, or-
The town's probably paying, the town's probably paying a hundred dollars a ton right now for it, so we're saving thirty dollars a ton by going.
Yeah, we don't need it.
All right, sounds great, thank you for-
So do we need, do we buy consensus that we'll work with Mark to get the salt, and you'll go up there and get fuel?
Yep.
Great.
Perfect.
All right.
Get us all getting along again.
Okay.
Goodbye, y'all.
Moving on, so the initial twenty-five, twenty-six budget presentation.
Yes. So this is just high-level to get us started for next week. Next week is the actual official first budget workshop meeting, where we will really dive into it. You don't have binders in front of you yet, you don't have a budget in front of you yet. So, I mean, not that we won't entertain questions, but they'd be a little premature at this point, so that we're just sort of setting the stage tonight, and getting our brains-
Let's save our questions for next week, we see each other next week.
Aren't you so excited? Getting our heads back into the budget process and the thing. So just as a reminder-
No, thank you.
Last year-
There are extra copies too, if you wanted paper copies, there are copies on the edge of that table. I don't know about you, I'm old-school, I like paper copies, so, just in case.
I will tell you that we did make some slight changes from print to what you're going to see, not content. We had, we actually took some stuff out that was a little more detailed, down-to-the-line item, that we will dive into next week.
That's why we have this next-week meeting, focusing solely on this, so.
Yeah, and I will also say that Jeff noticed today, so I will call this-
Every bit of that was in that email.
Out today, that we neglected the technology lines in the budget timeline. Like, neglected them completely. Or I neglected them, and-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they, and it passed. So anyway, we will not skip over the technology line. My thinking is, since next week's meeting is budget workshop only, and there won't be any other business to attend to, that as long as we're not all cross-eyed and exhausted, that Jeff will be prepared to go next week, and if not, we'll just tag it on to the following line, but I just wanted to call that out, because that was my error in creating the timeline.
That's why we have multiple runs.
Exactly, yeah. So this process was actually really fun to do last year, for those of you who were here, and you will probably recall, or for those of you who won't, I will let you know what we did. So given that we had just written five-year goals, you know, I don't think Barrington is the only one who has done this historically, most districts I've worked for, although I feel like I've only worked here now for so long, is, you know, every year, it's like the budget is new and fresh, and it really, truly shouldn't be. You shouldn't feel like you're starting from scratch again. And everything just kind of came together over the past couple of years, where we redid mission and vision, and we, the five-year goals were due, and I thought to myself, what are we doing? This doesn't make any sense. Our budget should align with our five-year goals and where we are headed, and there should be some continuity in that discussion and in that process. So what you're gonna hear tonight a little bit is kind of where we've been, what we, you know, so grateful that the voters passed last year's budget, the positions that we obtained, obviously supplies and materials, and those larger things that we will need as we are entering year three of our five-year goal cycle already.
I can't believe that.
It seems amazing to me. And I will say, before we jump in as well, that, you know, as, you know, the following year, when we plan for year four, really kind of needs to be all of the things that we think we need to achieve the goals, because if we're adding new whatever for year five, by the time you see any progress out of that, you're at the end of your five-year goal cycle. So you really just have three or four years to gain and implement what you need to in order to arrive at where you are hopeful you're going to arrive at the end of that five-year process. So, and I'm sure most people have noticed that Mrs. Dealey is absent this evening, she had a family situation to attend to, so I will speak to her sides when we get there. So the outline, I'm gonna add some new pictures before we get to the hearing, but, you know, the content was more important for tonight, not the pictures. I did adjust the outline, because obviously some of our content has changed in this presentation for this evening. Budget timeline is the budget timeline, not gonna spend any time here. The important dates are the hearing on January seventh, a deliberative on the eighth, and then the actual voting day on March eleventh. New mission and vision, I will draw your attention to our wonderful new sign here in the boardroom, and there's also one in the foyer of the elementary school, and people have really loved them, so we're hoping to get them in the other two buildings as well. So really, this budget is written in hopes that we can realize our mission and our vision moving forward. So this is really what drives our overall budget, big picture, the preschool through twelfth-grade enrollment history. Because there's only a twenty-student difference between each of the marks, it looks like a massive dip in enrollment, but it is, it is really, you know, thirteen seventy-six from a fourteen thirty-two. So we are, right now, projected to decline slightly for next year. So we are right now projected to decline slightly for next year. Primarily, those numbers are at the elementary school level. We have had a couple of years where our kindergarten enrollment has been lower than that typical 100 mark. And so there's, there's, was 86 two years ago and this year, 89. And so you've got close to 20 kiddo variance there, which is unusual. A few slides later, I'll speak a little bit to the demographic study where, you know, typically our kindergarten enrollment actually exceeds the birth rates that are recorded in town. And right now, they are slightly lower, which is unusual for us. I will say however, that there is a new charter school that has opened that is close enough for families to drive to. And we do have quite a few families who have either remained homeschooled or are attending one of the two charter schools that are somewhat nearby, that are drivable. So we are seeing that shift as well. And then anybody who's kind of keeping tabs on sort of the climate and culture at the state level and at the Department of Education, charter schools are being highly promoted at this point.
Highly promoted. They're being given so much funding, but that's fine.
So much funding. However, I am fairly confident and wonderfully hopeful that we will get those students back. I know that one of the two of those schools is struggling with staffing. So we will see where that lands. But here's the landscape for enrollment currently. Projected in preschool, we go with that 72 number. We have not realized full capacity for quite a few years. We had, in the years past, we always had wait lists. And I feel like, you know, because it's not a full day, and let's just look at the economy, right? I mean, it is becoming more and more unrealistic for either a, any, any parent, you know, either male, female, whatever, to stay home with their children and be able to provide that midday transportation. And we don't transport all of our preschoolers. We just transport the preschoolers who qualify for special education services. So I really feel like that has been a challenge and people have had to seek full-day childcare. So at its fullest, we can have 72 students across those six classrooms. Six sessions, I should say, three classrooms. So kindergarten, again, we always project for 100. That's usually a pretty spot-on number. It ranges 98 to 102 typically, but this is a lower-than-typical year. And then two years ago, we had that low year as well. So of course, that's gonna trickle into the elementary school, which is...
Bless you.
You can see that here declining from 407 down to 384. And then BMS going up slightly. High school numbers also going up slightly, obviously based on current eighth grade enrollment going into freshman year. So those are projections. We'll see what happens in real time. Let's talk a little bit more about high school. I will say, you're probably, well, you probably already looked at it. You're a little sticker shocked when you see the costs there. They are increasing. So for anybody listening out there, this is why I hound you for residency information, because we literally write a check for every high school student who, who goes, since we don't have one. So here is our history so far. We did have that spike year back in 2021 at 485. And we're projected, I mean, currently, we are at 424. And you'll see the projections coming up, right now, actually. So I did have some initial conversations with Oyster River outgoing superintendent, Dr. Morris, before he retired last year and made some tentative agreements with their school board and ours at the time. I have a follow-up conversation, I believe, this week on Thursday with Dr. Shapps, who's the new superintendent. We're finalizing just sort of the language and the numbers within that tuition contract. We've always, there's only been one, we've had lotteries several times, and it makes people wonderfully uncomfortable when they are on the waitlist. I think there's only been one year where a family who wanted to go, didn't go, but at the end of the summer, we would have been able to accommodate them, but they actually had moved to ensure that their children could go there. So it tends to work itself out by the end of the summer. But I know if it were me, I would not be comfortable waiting through the summer to know where my child was going to high school. So we did have some conversation around raising that number to 55, just to relieve the angst over that waitlist. We haven't had a waitlist in the last few years. But I will tell you, interest in the high schools, it's really fascinating. And this year, for whatever reason, the current eighth grade class is all about Oyster River. It's all I'm hearing. So the other thing is over time, as long as, of course, the tuition contract passes in March at the vote. So please make sure you understand that we need to send our children to high school. So we really need our tuition contracts to pass, that they have a, like many districts across the state, they are anticipated that their enrollment is going to start to decline. And so three years from now, they will realize that from their middle school into their high school. And so over time, their board has been in agreement to incrementally continue to increase the availability for Barrington kids to attend Oyster River. So I think we had it tap out at 270 or 280 at the end of the 10-year contract. So as long as that all comes to fruition, that's how that will land. Historically, because our policy indicates that we, the district won't pay more than the highest-paying school of record for tuition at another school. We do have a memorandum of agreement with Co-Brown, and so they tend to come in just under the Oyster River number, last year to the tune of $1 less. I'm not kidding. And it has ranged from $100 to a couple hundred dollars less, but it, I mean, it's basically the same number. So you may be thinking to yourself, hey, Deanna, why did you project the Dover numbers to be so low? And I, I say that just because I'm, I'm hearing the conversations at the middle school and through the school counselors. And honestly, when I'm budgeting an over $9 million line item, I want to ensure that I have the funds to send children where they want to go to school. I would rather put my numbers in my highest two schools and breathe a sigh of relief when we have a little extra money in that tuition line and not take the risk that we're going to go over. So as you all know, this changes drastically. So the, the enrollment slide that I will change consistently between now and the hearing is this one. Because if I know somebody has moved in or moved out at the tune of 20-ish thousand dollars a head, I want to be as spot-on as I can. Because also remember, we're budgeting 18 months prior to the implementation of a budget. So at our best guess, it's still like throwing darts at a dartboard blindfolded. So we, we keep as close tabs on it as we can. So that's why I put the numbers where they are for now. Can certainly adjust them as parents start to finalize their decisions. So the highlighted ones are not confirmed at this point. The Oyster River number is confirmed at 21,146 per student. I will share that I have some questions about that, that I'm going to be asking of the superintendent in Oyster River on Thursday.
That's a seven, yeah, seven and a quarter percent increase in one year. Is there any like cost-controlling measures in our contract with them?
Our current one.
Do we just take the rate they give us?
Yeah. And one of the questions that I have is, they've shared with us that they have declining enrollment, right? So there are certain things within their budget that we're not responsible for, right? Like, we don't upkeep their facilities, their transportation, you know, their food service, those kinds of things. However, this is a little bit of a head-scratcher for me. Their number is determined based on their per pupil number, which is how our rate is determined, right? Obviously, your facility expenses don't go away. And so if your enrollment is declining, then your per pupil cost is increasing. And I don't know that Barrington necessarily should be responsible for that. So I'm gonna dig into this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it's, you know, the unfortunate thing is, I'm glad I don't work for the Oyster River School District when I make this comment, but it's, you know, as the population declines, I guarantee you they're gonna be, they're, they're gonna be very hesitant to want to cut staff, right? So they're, they're clinging to staff, right?
Well, and Barrington continuing to send students there continues to allow them to keep their programs whole.
Absolutely.
So that's, that's why I want to dig in and ask more of those follow-up questions this week.
Their last board meeting, they announced this rate, and one of their board members said, does Barrington know this number and are they okay with it? Because it's a substantial jump. I'm seeing it tonight after they adopted it. So I don't know that we knew it before.
I, I did not know it until I got the letter in the mail late last week. Actually reached out and asked.
This raised a lot of eyebrows at the Barrington School Board meeting. That's what I would respond.
Garth even took off his glasses.
I even went like this.
Yeah. So there are some concerns for sure. And then the Dover number, just for people who aren't aware, that's not unusual for that to be estimated. We will go, we don't even have this year's number yet. And it's because it's a city tax structure with a tax cap and they just, their number is just done differently.
So I'll just ask the question, because 25 years ago, and I'll tell you where we were going with it. And I don't mean to bring it up, but so is that $21,146 what they estimated cost to teach a kid from Lee or Matternburg or Durham?
Well, less because we have like a administrative fee on top of it. So slightly less than that, yes.
When I, when, when I was on the board, Dover was our, Dover was our school of record. It's the only school we sent kids to. We didn't, we would, if I remember correctly, we had a small handful of kids that went to Co-Brown. But what we paid Co-Brown was what the Dover tuition rate was, and the parents had to pay the rest.
Correct.
So what Dover was, what the state had a formula that says, you figure this out, it costs you X number of dollars to educate every single kid in that school, then out of district, students such as Barrington and Nottingham were going to Dover. And I think Rollingsford was going to Dover as well. They, there was a small surcharge that they were allowed to put on top of that. And while I agree in the fact that, you know, that high school in Dover is millions of dollars over budget, the fact of the matter is, it's there and it's gotta get paid for. And everybody's like it or not, either, you know, you can build your own high school and incur all the same costs yourself, or you can take and bite the bullet hard and go, well, we don't like this. It is what it is.
Yeah, and part of why, and I think this is important for people to understand as well, and you can look at the program offerings of smaller districts nearby, right, that do have their own high schools. You really need about 550 kids before you can offer robust high school programming. And, you know, I think that's, not only do we benefit from having three different high schools that are very different, and students are very different, right? So we have that fortunately for families to choose from. But also, if we were to look at building our own, it would be a very skeletal, bare-bones type of program. It would meet state requirements because you have to in order to be accredited, but we wouldn't have, you know, our own CTE program, a, a full, you know, foreign language offerings. You know, there would be, you know, the arts would be minimal, like there would, it would be a very...
And struggles hard.
Yes.
You know, they don't have a lot of, they don't have a lot of commercial tax base to help them. So the vast majority of all the bills are being paid by residential people up there. And the problem is, is that, you know, you see the other, you see the other areas are lacking, you know, they, you know, they try to do what they can to make sure the schools get, the schools get what they need. I'm, I'm not sure they're getting everything they need. They're probably in a lot of cases, like you say, they're, people, they're lacking in some areas, but...
And it puts their students at a disadvantage, which we would be in that boat when they go to then apply for colleges, but also their, their success in college. You know, they don't have the, those offerings. They don't have the higher-level math and science courses and different things. So just to add a little context for folks, why we do what we do.
All right. Thank you.
So this is just taking the high school piece out, just our preschool through eighth grade history. And again, we are a slight dip for this current year from a 977 last year to a 952. Given that there's been a lot of conversation around elementary school, its age, how we've hired staff and added programming, but have not expanded those four walls at all. And then also look around, right? There's all kinds of building. So we're just, no need to panic yet, obviously, based on enrollment. But I think it's important to start messaging this now to the community in addition to the fact that we have money in the budget to support paying an architectural firm in order to dig into what does this look like moving forward if we do need to expand. So we did complete a demographic study with, I always say Niasq, Nezdeck. Too many acronyms. The New England School Development Council back in March of '23, because we all started getting nervous when you see major building projects going on. And these are just some of the high-level things that were pointed out, that over the last 10 years, despite what the rest of the state looks like, Barrington's population has continued to steadily increase. And the other thing there is that the mean age is lower than the mean age in other communities. And we, not we, Nezdeck reached out to realtors in the area, and they all confirmed, like, what they hear out of people's mouths right away is Barrington is a desirable community. We want our kids to go to those schools. You know, it's a safe, tight-knit community, and it's younger families that are coming to town. So that's, that's what we're hearing from the realtors.
How many, how many middle school students? Do you have an idea on how many middle school students we picked up in the development in where the town hall was?
Town hall? No. I know across the street, there's four or five families, but the town hall one, I'm not sure on.
I do have that info.
You're tracking by development, aren't you?
Yep, yep. Cindy Taylor is...
Can you just send us an email?
Absolutely, yep. Cindy's been tracking that for me, so she can go in, or any of us could if we learn, right?
Andrea had said, her and I were just talking one day at a, I don't know, some, it wasn't even at the school we were, or somewhere, and she said she only, they have one kid in the elementary school from that development.
Not, you know...
Not a lot, no.
No, we don't have a lot at this point. The total number I do know is 20, but it's across multiple different streets. It's not just the one side of the town hall. So we've gained about a classroom.
Was it, was it for development or is it, it is for the development?
The guy, the guy that bought it likes to do condo projects.
Yeah, so that's 55 acres where the condos going in.
Well, there was already a proposal on the table, and if that comes to fruition soon, we're, we're gonna be in trouble. Yeah. It's gonna be a massive game changer. When I heard that, I was like, oh, yeah.
It's...
You're gonna be busy.
Condos usually need to attract young couples that don't have kids yet, or older couples that their kids are already grown up and gone.
Or people who can't afford to go live in other towns right now and truly love our high school choice and want to go to our schools. Like, that's what we keep hearing. So the, the, these studies are, get, are old or stale pretty quickly. So we're, you know, March of '23, we're already more than a year out. At that time, they didn't even take into account the next to town hall because they hadn't broken ground. So I had done some follow-up calls with the people who did... So I had done some follow-up calls with the people who did the study, and we did some using their formulas based on size of home, single-family versus condo. They have different rates for that. I then did the math on, okay, once they break ground, and we, you know, these are ready to be moved into, on the high end, we would look at gaining 100 students, K to eight, and an additional little more than 10 high school students as a result of that. But since I've done that figuring, it's like, a couple more have popped up here. Coote Farm has sold, you know...
Lemus Farm just sold two, and that's gonna be all houses.
Yeah. That's like 35 of something houses. The problem is...
Discussions we had over the TIP district meetings are, I asked the question quite simply. I said, "Okay." Because, I mean, you guys must know to some degree, I mean, Barrington's a huge piece of land, right?
Yes.
So, I mean, there's a lot of...
Just under 60 square miles.
Right, a lot of undeveloped land. This is, well, okay, if, there was no rules, and you just told developers, you know, "You can build wherever, whatever you want, wherever you want. Go ahead." I said, "What's the appetite? There must be a number." And they literally said, like, "Infant." Like, they, if they could come in and do it, they would be building in Barrington nonstop. So, so, yeah, it's coming, and it's...
It's coming.
We just have to, you know, prepare accordingly, because...
But the problem is, is that...
Because that Coote Farm went for 5.8 million dollars? So, you know, developers are not shying away from, and that's just the land cost.
One of the cheapest houses you're seeing in Signature is $700,000. And he, he, the developer himself told me he was gonna sell three houses in there for over a million bucks. And so the, the problem is, is it's pretty hard for you to be a young married couple and decide you're getting ready to start your family, and find a way to go in there and pay 750 or 800,000 dollars for a house. You can't afford it. And so that's part of why your numbers are down.
Yeah, so...
A lot of the people in there, in Signature, came from out of state. They, they had a house out of state.
Well, people are selling high in mass and moving out.
And coming up here and paying cash for the houses up here.
Yeah, exactly what's happening.
So they either have no mortgage or a very small one.
Yes.
And the baseball players on Smoke Street, right?
So people may be wondering, "Why are we putting all this money into an architectural firm right now?" Well, I think we would, most, not all, would agree that we don't want modulators. We take pride in our facilities, and we're just being as proactive as we can, and...
Are you thinking of doing a rerun of the report? Even though I know you were redoing your own numbers, but their calculation...
The demographic?
Yeah, are you thinking of doing another?
I think we should next year, for sure.
I was just about to say, yeah.
After COVID, I think this is gonna be the challenge of our time, right? Like, really, like, I think the population of this town is exploding. And I think if, if we are able to stay ahead of it, like, like we've been doing, like, you've been, I'm on it, but like, let's be ready to go. Because it's gonna happen, and we don't wanna get caught with our pants down.
Yeah, it's definitely gonna happen. I know there's some people who are like, "Nah, you know, people can't afford to leave, you know, the, the aging population is staying." I don't know. There's just too many houses being built. And if we look at, it's where we're situated, right? I mean, if you look at the seacoast region, you, nobody can afford to live in, and then they bring towns, and we're next.
Find, find a starter house in Barrington, you can't. There's no such thing, because you're right. People that would typically get to be my age or a little bit older and say, "You know what? It's time to retire someplace else."
You're hanging on to your houses.
You know what? I'll die here.
Yeah.
Well, the gates open, so apparently you're already dead.
On that happening.
Anyway, moving on.
Okay. So more to come on that.
Yeah, we have a lot of people that you need to listen to tonight, so...
All right, let's, let's keep going, let's keep going. This is just an introductory one.
This is why we are putting the time and energy into the architectural firm, to make sure things like, you know, not only, we need to make sure that the, the additional well can be run over, or we have, you know, that building's not sprinklered. Like, there's a lot to uncover, because that building was 1970...
What building? 91 over here.
That was the, that was the...
That was '89. The elementary school?
Yeah.
Yeah. Seventy-five was the ECLC.
Yeah, okay, seventy-five was the ECLC. And there was something was in the seventies. All righty.
All right.
So per pupil cost comparison, I'm gonna skip on right by this. We don't have the state averages yet. The elementary has trended a little bit lower than the state. Middle school has been pretty spot on to the state expenditures per pupil cost. I took out all the separate slides for this upcoming year, but felt like, big picture, we would leave the four bucket areas, operations, academics, behavior, and community. And I'm not gonna read the goals to you all. Always get by the slide for this evening. We kept this one in there, because it really has been the driving force behind some of the positions and the additions that we proposed last year. And so Sarah's gonna speak a little bit more to this when she gets to her pieces. But I think, you know, the, the pieces that we really focused on last year was relieving the load of other tasks and responsibilities. And again, I'm gonna give a shout out to Bridget, because she has really just jumped on sort of those managerial tasks that are so time-consuming, and has really been digging into transportation and food service and grants. And so now the principals don't have to do that, and you get to hear wonderful data around their engagement in classrooms and walkthroughs, which is great. So, having said that, I will hand it over.
All right.
Do you want this in front of you?
I'm just gonna send this around, because it's in, I know, it's little, I just didn't know if you wanted it.
Oh, okay, I'm all set.
All right, I'll keep it for later, then. Everybody else, okay, great.
Do you want one?
Nope.
Nope, everybody good?
Thank you, though.
Okay. So as Deanna said, last year, the traits of highly performing school districts were really looked at, and last year's budgeting cycle, so like, this year, we're, like, living it. We looked at the goals, the clear and shared focus, the high expectations, standards, and effective leadership. But, so keeping our kind of toes dipped there, because you don't wanna just go, "Oh, we're done," and move along. This budgeting cycle's really going to be on the processes, so collaboration, communication, alignment with state standards, and monitoring of teaching and learning. Okay, next slide. Perfect. So I kind of simplified the five-year goals for the academics here. So what we need in our goals, academic support for all students, providing effective and rigorous academics, and strengthening teaching processes and practices. So what is, what does that mean? So if you look to the right-hand side, that looks like staff collaborate regularly and are focused on monitoring of student academic outcomes. We offer and use programming and instruction that is aligned to the standards and is rigorous. And this is a really key thing here. There's a new RSA out that conforms to national and state laws and regulations. There is a new RSA that includes literacy skill development, reading, writing, and math. By 2007, you have to have X, Y, and Z. We are ahead of the game. I feel very good, because of the math. And we are piloting this year for reading and writing. So we're gonna be well ahead of the curve by 2007, but just know, coming down the pipe, this is a law and regulations in RSA, we have to do it. And then, of course, teaching and learning are a key focus of staff supervision and evaluation, which, you know, we're pretty deep into.
Is that RSA in relation to the science of reading?
Yes.
Okay.
And then they tagged on the, the writing and the math. Math being like, fact fluency and that, that type of thing.
Yep.
And they tagged on a couple grade levels, too.
Yep.
Yes, they, they expanded it, right? They expanded what they...
It was K through three. We did K through four.
It's K through five now?
And now it will be K through five.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this gonna be part of the, the budget presentation we give the town?
What is what?
Is this part of the budget presentation that we're gonna give the town? Like, when we do, like, the...
When we do the hearing?
Yeah. So what does this, like, some of this stuff has got nothing to do with budgets. It's got to do with, like, culture of the school.
On the next one, though.
No, I'm looking at it. I'm just curious, like, what is, what's the thinking? I'm not saying it's not great, I'm just saying, is it, does it belong?
So this is given the rationale for what my budget's going to, when I give you my budget. This is my rationale. This is how I get to, here are my lines.
Okay.
And why I'm doing, you know, kind of why we're doing it.
I'm slow on...
It's okay, it's all good. Okay, next slide. So, kind of where are we now? It's always nice to recognize what we are doing, what we have been doing. So the first two are really, if you're looking at, ooh, I shouldn't pull that, that looks very messy. This is gonna be your first one. So review, we reviewed and refined our CTT teams, so it's our teacher, collaborative teacher teams, really focusing on those standards of learning, high learning standards, focus on new data protocols and instruction. Teachers have a different way of looking at all the IREDDI assessments, all of the ACADIENCE assessments, and we are working on specific data protocols for, for all students. We got our second-year implementation of our math programming. It's going, it's going well, actually. Piling an ELA program, and then our new professional supervision evaluation system that you did ask Rich about earlier, which is supposed to enhance teacher learning and professional practices. So instead of just going in once a year or twice a year, kind of looking, having a quick conversation, that's it, it's more focused around instructional coaching. They go in there for 10 to 15 minutes at a time, but many different times. And that conversational piece, the leverage piece that they're using to really, "Hey, this is what you can do right now or tomorrow in your classroom," that's going to make it better. So that's kind of our new teacher supervision evaluation. So how do we get there? And this is kind of how we're going to take this and put it on paper for, all my numbers are gonna be coming at you. So we need to utilize appropriate consultants and opportunities to execute professional growth opportunities. Whenever we do something new, roll out some initiative, we have to have training in it. We wanna use, we need to use district-wide aligned rigorous programming in all content areas with integrity, and the continuation of a supervision evaluation system that's consistent and focuses on professional learning. So those are the things that we will be, like, heavily focused on. Very simplified. Next slide. And we should be proud, we've done a lot in the last few years. Executing new data protocols to engage educators, successfully implemented and aligned new math programming. It was a little, it was tough last year, but this year, coming back, students have had it for a year, teachers have taught it for a year, hearing some positiveness coming from that. And we've developed a new professional education, supervision, and evaluation system. We did completely change the structure, the rubrics that we use. We use an online tool now to be consistent, and the model that we're using, which is the walkthrough mini, so...
If I can just make a suggestion...
So no, it's not what goes to the...
Yeah. If I can just make a suggestion, can we, can you, can we move this to, like, we should, I think we should start with, "Here's what we've done," then move to what we're presenting, but I, I didn't understand from your presentation. We don't need to fix this now, but just for, for next week, how, all the things that were wonderful and super, super detailed, but how that equates to, like, what you need from us. I know that you'll, you'll speak to it, but I think that many people are just gonna read it, and they're not gonna listen to these meetings. And so I didn't catch that. I know it, because we've talked about it in multiple meetings, but I didn't get, capture it from, from there. So I would start with what we've done, and then move to, "Here's what I need," and how it, how it relates to all the things, where we are now, how do we get there? I can read between the lines, but I don't think that the general public will be able to, you know?
And so to your point, Garth, when we actually get to the hearing, where I'm the only one that's speaking, I'm not going through all this. This is just the backstory for where...
She slides over the, the piece of paper with the number on it. I got it.
God, yes. This is the backstory for then, why are we bringing to the board what we're bringing to the board? And obviously, where we start is never where we end. So, yeah.
Okay.
So very good, we clearly have done a lot. I know those are only three bullets, but all the people at this table know that was a lot of subbullets.
Yeah, I put a lot of them there. I kept cutting and kept cutting, and Deanna was like, "Cut more." And I'm like, "Yeah."
This is just that, that bigger picture thinking of aligning our asks to the five-year goals. And then, what the, what the community at large will hear at the hearing is just, "What are we asking for that particular year?" They're not gonna get all the backstory, because it would be wonderfully confusing.
I just would still simplify it. I just would simplify it, that's all I think. It's a lot. Because everybody watches all these meetings from start to finish, right? Everybody in town?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Maura said she was gonna... Maura said she was gonna...
That's right. When she wakes up from her slumber, okay. All right, Professor Liddy?
All right, facilities. So the first, over the district, what we're looking for, for changing up a few things is cleaning company. Cleaning company, there's different levels of clean, and I wanna get up to where we can be a two to a one. Right now, we're at a four or a three. This company that we're looking at now, will do a lot more burnishing the floors, deep clean, and it's a collaboration also with the town that we're looking at, doing that with. So that would be that. Looking at, again, tree service line into the budget for, well, we were up at the ECLC this year, and we did a bunch up there, but all of the buildings need to be done. It's gonna be a revolving door. Once we start getting 10, 12, 14-inch trees that are dead or hit by lightning, eh, gets a little sketchy. Then an inventory system with work order capabilities and maintenance plans. What we're looking at with that is the alpha solutions you've heard me speak about, where we're gonna Q R code all of our assets, and then we're able to take into a preventative maintenance, uh, maintenance plan through that, using Operations Hero, which, what that is, is our work order plan, being able to develop a CIP plan from that, knowing when our end of life is gonna be on our equipment, what our equipment's gonna be doing, and what it's gonna do for an overall report that we can report out to you guys and say, "Air Hall Number One at the middle school is been rebuilt, but it's still 22 years old. This part of it needs to be redone."
That's right.
So, that is that. So then, moving on to BES, what we're looking there is for planning for a potential addition. Deanna spoke to that, potentially on that, so we, we're moving in that direction. We have a lot of conversations on that.
This is the first I'm hearing of it.
Looking at the renovation project, getting back in track for that, new floors, looking at six LVTs down the fourth grade end, that will finish up most of that wing, and then doing between the two gymnasium and front foyer with LVT flooring there, comparable to what was in the nurses' office that we did last year. So that's gonna start bringing us in that way. Then moving on to BMS, of course, we've talked about the windows, the repairs that we've had there, looking at that, doing over a three-year plan, starting off with the worst-case bank worst, the worst bank of windows first, then going the next year to the second smaller bank, and then the last year would be the third biggest bank. Generator upgrade, we're looking at that there. The controller is obsolete and no good. So once it's functioning right now, all we need to do is get the fuel gauge for that. Once we have that, then it's the controller and the thermostat and that area, the fluids have never been changed in that machine. So that is, in the, in the works, that's in the plans, too, for that there. The other one that we're looking at over there is the water pump for the sprinkler system. We've talked about that. I've gotten a verbal on that, but that's gonna be more of a CIP plan, but I just wanted everybody to become aware of that, that that's something that we need to talk about and be ready for going forward. And then...
Could I ask for budgeting purposes that you kind of get a quote to do all the windows at once? And then the one, the biggest bank?
We have that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, you know, maybe it's not, you know, when we put everything together, maybe it's not affordable to do everything all at once. But if prices continue to rise at exponential rates, maybe it's, maybe it's in the best interest to get it done all at once.
And that's what I did is I had them give me an overall price and then let's break it down over a three-year period just so we can have both ways to go at it if we decide.
Joe and I are going to meet on Thursday to, I think Thursday, whatever day this week. And, and to give you guys some options for all these facility needs. If we put it all in the budget, it's going to look like this. If we use capital reserve for X, Y, Z, it'll look like this. If we stagger, it'll look like this. That way you can make some, you know, informed choices around, you know, because it, you, we all know that costs just continue to go up.
Go up. And then last thing for BMS is three more entryways to be done for walk-off mats. And then moving up to the ECLC would be upgrading the sign and doing their entryway flooring with a logo up there. Using their ECLC logo.
And I do think it might be beneficial for us to talk about the generator upgrade in the here and now and then it would come off of this budget process because that is our emergency shelter. Not to say knock on wood that we've had to utilize it, but it does need to be up and functioning. So 60,000, right?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. So that is something that if we feel fairly confident we can cover it in the budget that we may want to consider doing this year as opposed to waiting it for, for it to go down. Oh, it's the elevator that is also a concern.
The elevator is the 60.
That's the 60. I was like, where did that 60,000 come from?
What's wrong with the elevator?
It's again another obsolete panel. The building is 22 years old, so things are starting to not be able to be.
It's a door closure and.
Let's just open a charter.
What's the, what's the status of the generator that feeds the elementary school?
That's still working. That's old school, but we need to, that's, that's going to be part of our CIP. I'm going to get quotes for that. That's coming down the road for here in the ECLC. Where you guys, the town has looked at Kohler. I think, did you guys do one at your place? And down at the fire station and with the generator connections down here? Stopped in and talked to them and they're willing to come out and give us some quotes on both buildings for what it would be.
He was actually the best quote. He did, he did the food pantry, libraries.
That's what it was. Yeah.
And he did the public safety building and he had the best price out of all.
And talking with Jim on that too, he's got him doing the preventative maintenance work. So that could be something where we collaborate together on that too, going forward.
We should, we should probably also look at getting this building done too.
Something that I was thinking about on the way over here, and I just, I don't want you to do a deep dive on to it, but like, but maybe just anecdotally explain it to me. During COVID, we added lines to the budget to address the challenges of cleaning especially, like more intensive cleaning, medical stuff, whatever. Well, all that ended theoretically, but I didn't see all of a sudden like a line saying, well, we're not going to spend as much on cleaning because, you know, COVID's over. It just kind of stayed. So maybe just in general, why, why is, why are we still spending at such levels? Repurposing the funds, I'm pretty sure.
Slide number 53, if memory serves me correctly, which is past this presentation, has that whole.
Does it really?
Yeah.
Read my mind.
Because it was such a significant financial impact. And so really it's, it, it wasn't so much that we spent all this extra money because of COVID, because we did a lot of that with the air handlers and things like that. Yes, people were cleaning more regularly and more intensely. But it was, the financial impact is more, you don't have it. It's in my.
It's in your thing.
It's in my, in case you ask.
There's a longer one than this?
Yeah. There's one for tax impact and all kinds of things. Yeah.
They're never this short.
You know, what's the definition of a default budget? I've got that in the wings too. You just never know what's going to be asked. So look it, see?
Look at that.
So it is more so the fact that we, we need to run this district on eight to nine custodial staff and we have not been, had eight to nine custodial staff since pre-COVID or during COVID. So it was that shift from our own staff to contracted services is where we took the massive financial hit. So I have that comparison if that were to come up.
What were we paying per hour for that contracted service per person? Do you have a rough idea?
For the contracted service we have now is 26, I think it is 26 or 27. And the new contracted service would be 32.
Per person?
Per person. It works out to be in the contract.
Charges per building is what they do.
What it is, is it's per building, not per person, if you were to break it down.
All right. And just in the interest, it's 12 and we have a lot more of the reports to cover.
One quick thing. This year we got the teacher's contract, right?
Yes.
And so would it be next year that you'd think that we're going to bring a warrant forward to start putting money away for the elementary school?
Yep. Next year would be the year to start because we're not, other than the operating budget. Next, will next year be the no contract year? Because then the following year will be the pair. So next year would be the year to do it.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah. Yeah. And we also have to sort of recalibrate those larger projects to make sure facilities-wise, we can continue to support those. So we have some plans to extend parking lot roof life, et cetera.
But there's no reason not to start messaging out this year that next year, just so you all are aware, we're going to bring forth a warrant article to start putting money away for this. And so that way it doesn't catch anyone by surprise.
Yeah. And I think we can dovetail that with the, the slide on the demographic study and.
Yeah, I think that's a good place to put that. All right. I think next up is the ECLC one.
You still, okay. I will go through ECLC in rapid fire. Here we go. Yes, thank you. I'm not going to go into the lines because I really want Laura to be able to speak to her own building herself. So, you know, there are, there are some, some increases, some decreases. You know, really the, the one increase is people worked really hard to put forward a flat budget this year, given all the warrants that we are putting forward. But general supplies, it's no surprise there that, you know, it just keeps going up and up. The cost of everything is going up. And then also the language arts programs that were piloting. You would expect that for the littles, there's a lot of printing of materials. And so reams of paper are just costing more and more and more and more. So.
They totally are. Yeah, I was shocked.
Oh yeah, it's terrible. So. And you see that decrease in language arts because it's in the curriculum line for the year. So the money that remains there, there are things that are remaining constant like Hegarty and foundations, decodable texts and some tier-two teaching materials. But the language arts new program itself will be in the curriculum line. So we'll skip on past that. Next slide. So purchases, programming and people. So like I just said, the general line items overall have decreased, but primarily due to that shift in the curriculum line. Laura spoke last year about an interventionist, not just in reading, but also in math. And then she talked to me about the increase in behavioral need. You know, I don't think it's on anybody's mind that we're going to add two new positions to any one building this year. But again, you know, their jobs as principals is to speak to what they think their buildings need. And I will tell you, the amount of people that it takes to manage some of the intense behaviors in all of the buildings right now is really challenging. But more so when the little ones don't have a means to clearly communicate their wants and needs, behavior gets big. And from a CPI perspective, our restraint seclusion laws, you, you don't ever restrain a little child. So it's a very hands-off, multiple people approach. And what then happens is the people that should be doing interventions are managing behavior. So, you know, I would encourage us all to think about that piece of, you know, we, we don't have a behavior-specific person at the ECLC and we do in the other buildings. We all know.
Our status up there, we did a drill last week and I witnessed it and I'll say this, the staff did a fantastic job.
They're amazing.
Dealing with this young individual.
And then our tours back in September, you, I think, were maybe all a little surprised, but got to see some of the spaces that we utilize when a child needs de-escalation and a safe space.
Blew my mind.
It's in her updated package.
Aggressive issues.
You spend a fair amount of time.
No, but it's, that was eye-opening for sure.
And we know our playgrounds need some, some life. You know, we did talk last year about those are typically grant-funded or fundraising opportunities. But we still want to highlight that that's a small playground for a lot of littles.
And when you do your tree cutting budget, are you going to work in the upkeep of the owl trail? Is that going to be in there?
It's part of it.
Yeah, we just did that.
Did it already?
Yeah.
Fucking awesome.
Joe is on. It's done for this year. That's sort of what brought the need forward.
Yeah. That's great. That's awesome.
Much safer.
We just want to, we don't lose it, right? You know, it's just.
No.
There's a snapshot of our beautiful new entryway. And then also just some of the work that PTO done on the playground, just to give you an idea of some of the upgrades from last budget cycle. Just thinking about overall general line item increases. I'll go over those just very quickly in a second. Similar to, you know, Laura's thoughts, when we think about the need for support at the younger grades. It continues to be in my mind at the bottom. How do we build in some additional support for, in particular, first grade? To support the transition for kindergarten students into the first grade classrooms. Thinking about sort of weaning off what that would be. You know, thinking about three classroom assistants for the six classrooms so that they have sort of part-time in each one of the rooms. Won't talk too much more about the building space. I feel like that has been well documented and discussed. And then for our, our planning purposes, it's really just a revisit the conversations we had last spring with really separating out what we would consider a reach teacher and a steam teacher and really trying to identify those as two separate positions. So to Deanna's point, not that I necessarily think this is the year to do that, but it is bigger picture. It's something that I'm thinking about and I think that our school needs to consider. Going to the next slide. Similar to ECLC, the biggest significant decrease is in the language arts line. While we won't be purchasing necessarily all of the different materials, we do still need to maintain some funds in there for tier-two literacy materials as well as classroom libraries. And then on the offhand that we do think we should move forward with a steam position, I did put a line item in there for materials for that new position, which obviously will come out. Everything else is fairly minimal trying just to keep us at a flat.
Thank you.
All right, Barrington Middle School, just some pictures highlighting student athletics, a recent field trip and our beginning of the year staff scavenger hunt. Next slide. We don't have any huge increases for this year. There have been some recent increases in previous years, mostly just trying to equalize some of the core content classes. We too lost some or are decreasing language arts a little bit, but we did have to add, have to add in a software subscription. So that's why the decrease for language arts isn't as much for us as the other two buildings. The biggest, actually Jeff, you can go to the next slide. The biggest increase for us this year is going to be a one-time cost. Next year we have our decennial Niask visit, which is putting people, up to 10 people in a hotel for two nights, feeding them, having them at school, kind of observing and basically grading us. So that's a bigger increase in our, it's, it's coming out of the principal's dues and fees. But again, that's just a one-time increase. And also we've seen a lot of athletic increases for officials as well as the assigning program and just memberships to the various athletic leagues that our teams belong to. And one more recent is we're sending more, we're sending more students to the cross-country state meets every year. Like this year we are too, and that's gotten up as well. So unfortunately I didn't get that number until after I submitted this, but. So generally, you know, most of our facilities needs are coming out of Joe's budget, not mine, so I don't have. Not paying for the windows.
Still makes that bottom line ugly.
Yeah, so.
All right, excuse me.
All right, technology.
Does anyone know why technology is last?
I'm not leaving.
Saving the best for last?
And why are you leaving?
It's not for lack of interest, believe me.
It's because technology has to support, the story of technology supports all those other, all those other stories, so.
Were you looking in the mirror this morning like saying that?
I want you to listen very carefully to the technology story because it's very important, right? So anyway, in technology, in addition to our, just our daily operations budget, my budget planning is going to be focused on increasing resources in the area of data management and professional learning as well as the replacement of our aging technology assets. So first focus area related to data management resources. These include software and people that are responsible for maintaining the software systems that we use in our day-to-day operations. So when it comes to, whoa, what happened? There we go. When it comes to data systems, there's two kinds of systems that we use in our, throughout the district. There's personal systems and district managed systems. So on the personal side, those are systems that, you know, they're, they're usually purchased by maybe an individual and they don't require a management at all. You know, they're usually free, they could be paid for by the individual, but they have little to no impact on the, the district budget. The district data systems, they're usually annual paid subscriptions. They're usual, they're usually school or, or used district-wide. And they have a direct impact on the budget. So within, within those systems. So for the purpose of the budget discussion, we're only going to talk about district systems because the personal systems really don't apply. Within the district data systems, there's basically three types of systems. The infrastructure systems and those are the, um, systems that contain information about things like our computers and our Wi-Fi and our network equipment and building automation. Then there's the data security and governance. Those are systems that contain information about people. Those are things like our student information system and enrollment, single sign-on, HR and finance. Then there's the learning and assessment systems. Those are also people systems that are responsible for instruction. You know, things like Google Classroom, iReady, Reveal Math, Acadia and Stessa, those kinds of things. So although the systems that track the things are very important for the operation of the district, it's the people systems that are really our highest priority. And there's two reasons for, for that. The first is that those, the people systems are the ones that we use to make all of our data-driven decision-making about student achievement. And second, we're now mandated by the state, by state law to protect student and staff data security. So if we look at the evolution of data systems from 2017 to current, current time, back when I started in 2017, we had 28 managed district systems. Most of those systems contain information about things and only about 30% or so contain information about people. So today we have 111 systems. And we've added systems in all areas, but the people systems, the ones, those are the ones that are our highest priority in terms of data security and data accuracy. Those are now the, the majority of the systems that we use. So just looking at it another way, it's just in 2017, these were the 28 systems that we used. And today, this is the amount of systems that we have to manage. So there's been a huge explosion of data in the last seven or eight years. So the impact of this software growth, there's basically three primary impact areas. One is in tech support requests, so just help desk, general help desk requests. The other is in data management personnel and that's the number of people that are required to maintain all of these systems. And then professional learning is the third area and that's just the amount of training that's. that's required to become proficient in each of the systems. So from the tech support perspective, this is a history of tech support requests just in the month of September, and that's usually one of the busiest times of the year. So back in 2018, we had 29 requests in September, and this year, we're kind of leveling off around 400 in, in September. The good news is that two years ago, we added a full-time tech, Ashley Berry, who's allowed us to meet the demand for the tech support. So in that area, we're meeting the demand. However, in the other two areas, we still have some challenges to work out. So that second area of impact talks about maintenance of information systems. And the information systems that require a lot of maintenance, things like student and family demographic data, student enrollment, you know, course schedules, attendance, rosters, date reporting, medical records, dismissals, emergency planning, and so many more pieces of data that we have to manage. Eight years ago, with only 28 systems to manage, we operated, we functioned basically as a centralized system, so only a few people were dealing with changing and maintaining all the information in these systems. So over the last eight years, to keep pace with the growth, we've gone from centralized to a distributed management model. And so to illustrate some of the challenges that we face because of this growth in data systems, I just want to show you how the current distributed model applies to just one of our data systems, and that's the student information system. Right, so if you just take a minute and kind of try and absorb what's going on in this slide, the bottom line is, is that, you know, the work is getting done, right, but at a cost in terms of people hours, accuracy, and data security. So the main challenge here is that there's just too many points of failure. In the data security world, this is, this is referred to as an attack surface, and every 41, every one of those 41 data points is an attack vector that can be exploited. Another challenge with this, with working in this sort of distributed model, is just, it's like there's a lack of synergy in, in the level of training, because the data, it's being entered and manipulated in many cases by staff whose job responsibility doesn't include maintaining data on a, on a daily basis. So a better approach going forward with all the new systems that we have is going back to a centralized model with the addition of a full-time data specialist. So there's a whole bunch of benefits to this, but in my mind, one of the most valuable would be the freeing up of time for school-level administrative staff to focus more on student and family needs. The way that I configure this is that if 10 semi-skilled people are spending seven hours a week doing data administration, that's 70 hours of time that one skilled person working 40 hours could easily handle. So this is a position that I feel would be well worth the investment, both in terms of mitigating security risks as well as accurate recordskeeping. So the other area of impact for this data growth is professional learning. And by professional learning, I mean instructional technology professional learning. In a nutshell, that's, just refers to the train, teacher training on the use of technology, right, with the goal of improving academic achievement. So again, if we look at the learning systems growth that we've had over the years, just just supporting our MTSSA and V programs, our goals, over the years, we've added quite a few systems to the environment. So the champ, the professional learning challenge with respect to the addition of all these learning systems is how to clear what I call a knowledge logjam. What inevitably happens is that there's information overload. And so for sure, all of these systems, you know, they have value in increasing student achievement, but because of our current approach to technology training, a logjam gets created in understanding the most effective use to maximize the outcomes of the systems. This is going to continue to be a challenge with our current professional learning model because it's based on one-and-done sessions. It's essentially two to four hours per year of training that teachers get, and it relies very heavily on, on your own time learning. And there's no time built in to customize the technology to meet students' needs, individual Unfortunately, the result is a significant opportunity cost toward greater achievement learning this. The solution to this is an approach that is commonly used in high-performing districts, is to maintain a full-time instructional technology coach. And in most high-performing districts, there's one in every school, not one for the district. The instructional technology coach, they provide focused classroom support every day, and they're able to adapt the technology based on student needs. So ultimately, ultimately, they facilitate the best use of the district's technology My recommendation is an expansion of the Barrington School District IT Department to include two additional district-level positions at this point in time. And I want to mention that we're, we are moving in the right direction with this, with the addition of the computer science teacher this year in the middle school that freed up the part-time computer UA teacher to assist with both data administration and technology coaching in the classroom. The second area of budget focus for technology is our long-term asset refresh cycle. So by long-term, I'm talking about assets that have a seven-to-15-year lifespan. The two types of equipment that fall into that category are, are classroom projectors and core networking hardware. Regarding the classroom projection systems, so we're in, currently in year one of a nine-year refresh cycle. This was approved as part of our current year budget, so it won't have an additional impact for the 25-26 budget, but I just wanted to provide that information as an update. Finally, the other equipment in the long-term category would be the core networking hardware. This year, we're finishing the planning phase for that and applying for E-rate funding, and then with the goal of going out to bid and implementing that in the 26-27 year. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
I had a question. I know we're, I know it's running long. I just, if, if you had to pick between those two positions, something to be put on this budget, both clearly, in my opinion, incredibly valuable, so I just want to know what your recommendation would be, if only one of them could be on this year, which one would you want to be here, which one would you want to wait, just so that we can prepare?
And that, and that's tough because they both have a, a pretty large impact, or they're, they're restraining us in a pretty large way. So, but I would, I think I would go with the data administrator, the data specialist. That would free up more time for a resource that we already have as a technology to bear to spend more time in classrooms.
Okay.
Move forward quicker than.
Thank you. And thank you for all that information.
All right.
I am gonna, in such rapid fire.
Thank you.
Finish up this presentation.
Yes, I'm capping out on how much information I can absorb.
Right now, this is, there are no, we didn't, we have not put one position in the budget. We have put all the other asks in there, and you can see where the big increases are. So salary is the, where the current teacher salary rate is, because the new contract would be out on a separate warrant, but it's also all of your, your non-union people are in there as well. Benefits, we don't have that rate yet. The, the meeting happens the first week of November, that's typical every year. We always start with a 10% increase, that's on the high side, we hope. We have seen it be that high in the past. Katie has worked some magic and has kept the special education and student services lines as absolutely flat as possible.
That's amazing. That is incredible.
It is incredible. I will say, however, on her behalf, she's got a couple of, I mean, I walked in those shoes when we talked earlier today. She does have a couple of students right now that she's concerned about. This number may change, we, we may.
Even still, I mean, that's very, very impressive.
Yeah, so we have, we do have a particular student that may just need some additional supports. Right now, we're in the phase of doing anything and everything possible to, you know, we work hard to keep our students in district, so just wanted to alert you all to that. High school tuition, we ran those numbers based on the grid, the graph you saw earlier, not the graph, you know what I'm talking about? The, the actual and then the anticipated per pupil cost there. Transportation, we have to go out to bid for that, so make you put a reasonable increase there, just to give us a starting point. You heard all of the facility needs, and so we are going to kind of create a few different plans or options to manage those needs and bring that forward. Food service is an actual, and the other is just the, the compilation of what you've heard everybody talk about on, you know, general supplies and, and things like that. So this one will obviously change. Capital reserve accounts are very healthy, these are accurate, Vicki updated them as of October 1, so I'm not going to read to the detail on numbers for everybody. We have, you know, 1 million two in facilities, high school tuition, just under half a million, special education, just over half a million, technology, 82, and civics at nine. I do, don't need an answer tonight because we don't have a full board here. My recollection with civics experience is we created that in order to support and offset the fact that we were coming back from COVID and people didn't have the time to fundraise and save, and it wasn't necessarily something we were going to continue to fund at the high rate that the district had in the past. If we are going to, then I need to know that so we can consider adding to that warrant. We did spend over $15,000 to support families the last time that we went.
I think there was some brief discussion, if my memory recollects, about saving some portion, or keeping that just in case there are families who can't have that experience on their own, can't afford it, even regardless of planning.
We've always helped out, there's always been a couple that have need, needed either full or partial scholarships, but this past year, we kind of broke it down by four categories, like can you pay zero to 250, can you pay 250 to 500, 5 to 750, et cetera. So it's just something to consider as we move forward. So we hadn't planned on adding anything to that, but I want to make sure that we're doing what.
And what it's intended for.
Tended to do.
As bound to do.
Grant funding, you know, it, it again comes and goes largely, we all know that the basis of this formula comes from our free and reduced numbers, that's a pretty major factor, so really important that families turn those in. We did put a, a big push out post-COVID because it wasn't necessary, because lunches were fully funded, so I think we're back last year and this year to the rate that is more typical and expected, but as you can see, other than IDA, which this is the special education federal grant that we get, they continue to go down over the years. And I think the thing that will really hurt us a little bit is, SR funds are done, they're officially done, folks. So, and I say that because you see the huge amount of money we got in '21, '22, and then the entirety of the, whoops, sorry, column for '22, '23, like those were not separate grants, those were a variety of opportunities that the state put out that were left over or unused SR funds from other districts. And so every time an opportunity came forward, as you heard me say all last year, Sarah applied and we got them. Bridgette has applied for the third round of promising futures, it is taking them a very long time, and they keep pushing out the date, so I suspect we may not get it just because we were told in '22, '23 we wouldn't get it again because we got it in '21, '22, twice actually. So it wouldn't surprise me if we didn't get it because now people's heads are kind of above water, and people who were overwhelmed during COVID and not applying for things are now applying, so, but it, you always, we're always going to try, that I can guarantee, we're always going to try to get the funding. So this is the absolute end. I just started to draft and give people a flavor of the warrants that will be coming forward and how many of them there will be. So this is a very unusual year for us. Dover and Oyster River contracts are not typically due at the same time. Dover was a little underwater last year and asked to extend for a year, and so it put them both in one budget a year, which I think, again, is going to put us in a position to really have to explain to the community why they're both out there and not the third. So the elected positions, one question that was asked last year was why is our clerk and moderator, why are they both just one-year positions? So Vicki dug into that a little bit. We can absolutely make them two-year positions, and so I, I would suggest we do that. They're not, they're positions that are really hard to get people to fulfill.
They're not hard to contest.
They may not have to go forward on the ballot year after year after year, it would be great to make them two years, so, but I think it would be worthwhile to talk to the people who have those positions, one of them might be at the table this evening. That would be you.
What?
We'll chat later.
Okay.
Making the clerk position not a one-year position, two years, so that you don't have to be on the ballot every single year. And I know the moderator had asked me about that in the past, so I know that it is.
What's the town you use for moderator? Because it's two years or three years?
I think it's two, I'm not positive, though.
We should mirror. Town is two, district is.
Yeah, so I think we should go to two, and then all we have to do is stick that language right in the warrant for the elected positions, and then they would be two-year positions. So I thought that was on my whiteboard, I'd love to be able to erase it and call it completed.
I think that's the easy one.
Yeah, so then we've got the operating budget, the two different tuition contracts, the teacher contract, and then we always have the one that says if it fails, we reserve the right to revisit that one particular area, and then facilities capital reserve as well.
All right, thank you. Phew. Okay, so remember, before I ask this question, we are talking about it again next week, so anybody else have anything they want to add from the board side before we wrap this one up?
Great. This is your final opportunity, you did not even get 10 seconds.
No? Because we're meeting it next week, quick, we will do this next week. Okay, so this is your last opportunity for public comment, you get three minutes of time. I'm going to start with those that are in person. Great, and then we're going to move on to those online. Please use your raise-your-hand feature if you're interested in speaking. I'm going to take that as a no, so thank you very much, everyone, and thank you all for joining. I'm going to make a, all right, second? All right, all those in favor, I thank you all for staying for such a long meeting, appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
Everybody online gave up two hours.
No, they're, no, they've stayed, they're still on, they are holding on tight.